Good evening, I call to order the May 24th, 2023 City of Calabasas regularly scheduled city council meeting. Tonight, I'm joined by Mayor Protam Weintraub, council members Albrecht, Bizajin, and Kraut, as well as staff, our city manager and city attorney and city clerk. If you'd like to provide a public comment and are in person, please complete a speaker card in the back of the room and give it to our city clerk. If you're joining us via Zoom, please press raise hand or star nine if you're joining via phone and star six to unmute yourself when the item you'd like to comment on is presented. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for oral communication slash public comment. When you are called upon to speak, please state your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed up to three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this council. Tonight, we're thrilled to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Girl Scout Troop 3256.
Good evening, may I please have your attention for our flag ceremony? Please stand for the presentation of our colors. Color guard, attention! Color guard, advance! Color guard, halt! Color guard, present the colors. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join us in singing your grand old flag. You're a grand old flag, you're a high-fiving flag, and forever in peace anyway. Do you remember the land I love, the home of the free and the brave? Every heartbeat, strip, where the red and blue present for the postal front. They can always be the speed of the clock, keep your eye on that grand old flag, yes. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, salute the colors. Color guard, dismissed.
Thank you so much. Always a great way to start our meetings. We were informed tonight that Chief Smith could not make it, but he will be back at one of our next regularly scheduled meetings before July, we hope, and we will remove that fire department update from the agenda. With that, mind me, I have a motion to approve the agenda with that modification, please.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, we met in closed session prior to this meeting. Do you have anything to report out, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in a closed session and considered two items. The Conference of Legal Council regarding existing litigation, TNHC Canyon Oaks v. City of Calabasas, and Conference of Labor Negotiator regarding all underrepresented employees provided direction to staff and council and took no reportable action. The council deferred consideration of the first item regarding anticipated litigation to Friday's special meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we come to a very special person and we are thrilled to recognize tonight, and that is Robert Yalda for his service to the City of Calabasas as Public Works Director and City Engineer. I get to read, I think it's about 14 pages, Robert. In 1994, just three years after Calabasas Incorporated, Robert Yalda joined the city as its City Traffic Engineer. He was one of Calabasas' first full-time employees hired to lead the traffic division tasked with implementing various traffic and transportation-related improvements in the city. After two years, he was promoted to Director of the newly-established Traffic and Transportation Department, finally being promoted to Director of Public Works in 2006. During his 29-year tenure, let me say that again, during his 29-year tenure with the city, Robert excelled at encouraging initiatives and cultivating teamwork, being named Engineer of the Year by the National Engineers Week, Foundation's Ventura, and Santa Barbara County's Chapters in 2015. In addition to improving the local environment, enhancing traffic flow and safety throughout Calabasas, Robert's hands-on approach to management helped employees solve issues expediently and successfully. Robert frequently used the slogan, "A boss knows how it's done. A leader shows how it's done." Using his teamwork approach throughout his career, Robert oversaw all, almost all significant transportation-related improvement projects undertaken to date, including the Lost Hills Interchange, Old Town Rehabilitation, AE Wright Footbridge, drafting of the Mulholland Highway Master Plan, and creation of our citywide shuttle service. Aside from transportation, Robert managed many beautification efforts of the city, including the Lost Virginous Creek Restoration Project and countless birthday tree planting events, earning the city multiple awards for American Bloom. In fact, unofficially, it's believed that one out of every five trees in the city is planted while Robert has been here with the city. When Robert was not busy overseeing projects, you could usually find him in a meeting accepting grant funds on behalf of the city, leading a Boy Scout expedition for his sons Nicholas and Christopher, or spending time with his lovely wife Suzie, who he happened to meet at City Hall where they were once both employed. We'll have to talk about that, I guess. Using your talents and leaving a legacy is something we all desire to do, and Robert has succeeded in doing so here at the City of Calabasas. One of the nicest things I've ever heard said about Robert is that he's essentially the same person who joined the City of Calabasas all those years ago. I'm sorry, Robert, except for maybe a little hair, that's all. I did not write that, I'll stay. We congratulate Robert on a wonderful career and convey best wishes for the next phase. It has been truly a pleasure to work with you. And I'm going to turn to council comments before I make mine. I'll start with Councilmember Albrecht.
Where do I start? I think I start when we first really met, when you helped with the Mulholland-Sina Corridor project. And I being the homeowner president, we got involved, and I'll never forget that night. We had over 200 people at the Gelson's Community Room. It was a wild night. We had some people that weren't in favor of it that made more noise than the people that were, but they were... You held that meeting together very, very well. The project came out beautifully. All of us have traveled that over and over. I admire it every time I go back and forth on that road. And not to mention all the other projects, our relationship started them. And even till a couple of weeks ago, when we took a tour, you asked me if I wanted to go on a tour with Tatiana to all the hotspots. So I'd be more informed about what's important to know in the city. So thank you for your friendship, your insights, and your attention whenever I'd call. You were wonderful, and I wish you the very, very best in your retirement.
Thank you, Councilmember Kraut.
Oh, Robert, where do I start? You know, I was invited to take a seat here on city council. One of the first things that I was shown was our internal website that has all of our employees' pictures so that I could identify names of people I would run into here. I'm pretty sure your picture was taken 29 years ago because it doesn't look anything like you. You know, I had the pleasure of serving alongside you in Boy Scout Troop 127, and I've got to see your work ethic. I've gotten a chance to see your involvement with the children, with the youth, with helping mold them into young men. I really appreciate the fact that you created opportunities here for those scouts to get involved in beautifying the City of Calabasas in their Eagle Scout projects and stuff. It's funny that my fellow council member here sees you as the guy for the Mulholland project over there, because I see you as the guy for our Lost Hills Bridge over there. And I drive that bridge every single day. And it is still, well, you know, I have to say as well, because my wife is probably watching on TV here, that you promised her she would have final design approval of the bridge before you signed off on it, and you never called her. But nevertheless, the bridge turned out beautiful and all of your efforts to make sure that project went smoothly. You know, when you're destroying and rebuilding a bridge that crosses the one-on-one freeway and is the only entrance to a neighborhood here, and we didn't have any significant problem in that whole process. And it's a real tribute to your leadership and your management and your staff that you led the whole time. I just can't say enough about all the wonderful things you've done for the city and how sad we are to see you retire, but we're so happy to hear that you, you know, have that ahead of you and you'll still be hearing from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bizajin.
Well, Robert, I thought a lot about what to say tonight about you, but I really couldn't prepare any kind of comments because I've known you so long that there was just nothing I could say in a couple of minutes that would do justice to my feelings about you and your service here at the city. I remember when I was the city commissioner on the precursor to the Public Safety Commission. I remember when you got hired, and then I was elected shortly after you got hired. And you're the longest-serving employee, and now that you're gone, I am the longest-serving employee. So we've had so many adventures together. And I would say, in truth, there's not a single Public Works project in the city, nothing relating to Public Works or engineering that you have not had a significant role in the success of. All the accolades, awards, compliments the city's received, all the goodwill of the citizens, and everything that we can be proud of in Calabasas has some connection to you and your work and your leadership and guidance. And I'm so proud of you. And Suzie, I'm also proud of you too, because I remember when you were working here too. But, and there was never, you know, Suzie was not working under Robert at the time. Let's just be clear about that. But it's been great seeing you and your family and just knowing you as not only a colleague but as a friend. And I will miss you very much, but I'm happy that you're here in Calabasas, living here, and that we will definitely stay in touch. And I consider you a good friend. So best of luck to you in retirement.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'm Mayor Protam Weintraub.
Nice to see you, Robert and Suzie. I always think that everyone knows when they've entered the City of Calabasas. Like, the streets get nicer, the landscaping gets more beautiful, and that's because of you. And everyone notices. The kids, I mean, you notice when you enter Calabasas, and I'm always like, that's because of our staff, and that's because of you. And like, you set the tone for the community, and that's something so, like, you should be so proud of. Like, we're so grateful for that. Like, you've done huge projects that benefit everyone, but it's the little details, the fact that, like, there's such a high quality of life here because of our public works and all the work that's been done. And that's because of you. And I'm so grateful, not only as a council member but as a resident. I also, I was looking at Maureen too, but I think during, like, Woolsey Fire, something that really stands out, like, the leadership that you and Maureen, you guys, like, rose to the occasion. You know, your own home was, you know, I mean, you're a resident here, having to focus on your family, but like, it was city first. And the team that you've built in Public Works and how much your staff respects you and admires you. Like, there's just so much more than the big projects that you've built, but like, the human aspects. And there've been crazy times and crazy, you know, things that have happened, but I'm so grateful that I've had the opportunity to work with you. And now it'll be fun. You'll be able to call on us if there's ever an issue, and you'll see how quickly your staff responds, which is amazing. And that's all because of you. So thank you and enjoy the next chapter.
And Robert, I just want to add a few words and say thank you. Everything pleasant and nice has been said about you tonight, and that's appropriate. So I'm going to keep it up high. Just a number of things come to mind, and I jotted a few down. Heard about the Lost Hills Interchange, Councilmember Kraut talked about. I watched you in action, going to Caltrans to get things done, to work with Metro, to get the funding, to work with the county to make that. And more importantly, or equally as important, to work with the community to make sure every voice was heard all along the process. And I know the council supported you. That was a fantastic testament to one of the many projects you did. I didn't know what APWA meant until I met you and went to some of those far-off places where every time the city got an award or you and your staff got awards, tremendous. Old Townsmen mentioned, your work, Tree City USA, is in large part due to you and your work and the staff. American Bloom would not have occurred in the city without your efforts. And we do get awards, and your biggest award is you were Henry's roommate on a lot of those trips to get our awards as the best city. Walk to school hasn't been mentioned. That's something that I know you're passionate and brought to the city as well, and it carries on our school district now. We're partners in that, in that regard, and it's, the kids look forward to it each year and look forward to the good giveaways that you always manage to find. Safe Route to School Grants, those grants that you were able to obtain to help build some of the safe crosswalks abutting our schools, adjacent to our schools, going with you on some of the, as mentioned, the Eagle Scout projects, helping improve either a bus stop or a park or multiple parks or areas in our city. You taught the future generations and our youth how to be leaders and do good for the city and the community where they live. And so many more things. I can tell you, I really appreciate you. I will miss you. We all will. 29 years, a long time anywhere. I think in the city it is even more so. You've seen all the changes, and you've been a large part of those changes for us. You and Suzie will get some good time on your own and with your family, with your sons, to enjoy your retirement. You're not that old, but you can enjoy yourself. Thank you so much for everything you've done for the city. We appreciate you. And yes, you have french fries coming. And we do have a couple speaker cards. There may be some more online, I don't know, but first I'm going to call upon Member Public Marcy Verite Viner. Marcy? And I see Jerry there too. What, what, did I make a mistake? I did. Marcy is right. Viner's right. And you're right.
I'm not right. This is, this is about my friend, Robert Yalda. He may have been with the city for 29 years. Robert, I'm sorry, we go back 40. Everybody knows Robert and I have history. The history that we have, and we're going to start with his church in Encino, that really started in North Hollywood, California. I was the bartender that he kept hiring. I was also the bartender that he allowed to take care of the scouts, and we made a lot of money for those kids. If it wasn't for Robert Yalda, he was always for children. He made everything fabulous. But the other thing that I can share with Robert is I also know Robert's family, the entire family, very well, because we were all so closely knit. Who would ever put a Jew with a Assyrian and say, "It's going to work"? It works. It's so amazing what he has done, what he has accomplished. And we've had our arts councils, and we've had our shows, and we've had our dog runs, and we've had our relays. I can go on and on and on. Robert has always been there. He has always brought in a group, a committee, something to help the people. And what he's done for us as a community alone is just so special. He was in Calabasas before I was in Calabasas, and I remember when he got the job, he came that night to church and he says, "You're never going to guess where I'm going to go to work." And we're looking at him, we're sitting in the office, you know, of the parishioner, not the parishioner, but you know, of the priest. And we said, "Yes, so where are you going to go to work?" He says, "I'm going to go to work for the City of Calabasas." He says, "Doing what?" He says, "Whatever it is, I'm going to go and I'm going to stay." 29 years. Robert and Suzie, all I can say is, thank you, and especially for the friendship.
Thank you, Marcy. And the next card I have is Terry Dipple. Terry's, welcome.
Thank you, Terry Dipple. And I guess my official capacity is the Executive Director of the Lost Virginous Malibu Council of Governments, is why I'm here tonight. And I'm here because of this guy. Robert was the second person that I met when this guy, Dennis Washburn, who's bugging the city clerk. When Dennis encouraged me to help him form the Council of Governments, the first person that I came out and met with was Robert. And Robert and I developed a close working relationship after the COG was formed, and we worked very closely to put together the Measure R and Measure M project list that brought millions of dollars to Calabasas for street widening and park and ride, and partially for your bridge, and a lot of other, Mulholland widening and the green streets. And the list goes on and on. But Robert was always a pleasure to work with, a very strong advocate for his community, but also an advocate for the region. And he understood how making the region stronger benefited Calabasas and all the communities. And so it was just a pleasure for me to work with him all these years. And while I could have stayed home and participated virtually, I wanted to come and give him a hug and tell him, "Job well done," and congratulations. So congratulations, Robert, and thank you very much for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you very much.
And people should know how far Terry came to give Robert that hug. A very long commute.
And next, we have a new speaker card. It is Maureen Tumori. Not unfamiliar to this city. Welcome.
Our former city attorney, everybody excuse my voice, it's finally been diagnosed. I have squeaking disease, it's a whole thing. But Tony Kralis used to say, "You can pay people to come to work, but you can't pay people to care." I am standing next to the person who cared the most about this city in the most personal ways. He got his kids to plant trees, he cleaned the creek, he was with Hidden Hills in the trolley. He worried about what can't eat a thump. He didn't want to hurt somebody. He remembered to get dog biscuits because he got a dog and he saw little dogs. He did everything he could to make this city personal. And I say that sincerely. He would walk around in the morning every day, and I know he did not the last day he was here. "How are you doing? How's it going? How's your family?" These kinds of questions Robert asked all of us every morning, and he listened. When he needed money, he did better than just filling out a grant. He would take somebody out for a good Persian meal, a good Russian meal. He would do something that personalized the effort in order to make sure people understood he cared. He absolutely cared. I was privileged to work with Robert for 16 years on real life for life. We worried, he worried. How many people we get? How will we sell tickets? What will people have that we can give them? You are losing a treasure, an absolute treasure to this community. And I can't wish you anything but the best. I love you very much.
And I have one more speaker card here.
We have one person online.
Okay, the speaker card in person trumps online. And that is, of course, affectionately known as our mayor, Mayor Dennis Dennis Washburn. And you have a flow chart you brought. Okay.
Let's see if we can show that. I'm Dennis Washburn, Calabasas. Isn't that how we're supposed to introduce ourselves?
Thank you.
And been in Calabasas since 1971. And since 1991, working with the city people, and working since 1993 with Robert Yalda to do things that a picture is worth a thousand words to tell. I want to hold this up for everybody. That's where, that's where we are. And what's important about the way people dedicate themselves is the monuments that you leave, not to yourself, but to the quality of life or the life force in this town. This is an old picture. Right now, actually, let me turn it this way. That's the Civic Center property when it was just dirt. And Robert and Maureen and the bunch of us had to deal with the circulation element, the construction, the streets, the paving, the utilities, the drainage problems, and the enforcement of laws and so forth, you know, from the state of California and from the federal government. Guess who coordinated all that? This young man right here. We're not so young anymore, but still, he's a young man compared to me. And if you didn't ever see this picture of where you are sitting right now, this is really an important thing because not only is this a record of where we've been and where we are, but where we need to go. And all the work that Robert and his people have done in this community are giving us the opportunity to look forward for another 20, 30, 40 years. And when you have a foundation like you've given us, from the address labels that are on everybody's driveways right now, and all the street signs that have the Calabasas logo on them, to obviously the buildings that we're constructing and looking to maintain and preserve, that's Public Works. That's Robert. And it's kind of neat to have Suzie here as well, because as a planner, you're always looking forward. And as you are always looking forward, as tonight you're talking budget, budget is a big deal. And the budget has been helped by this man more than any individual the city knows. With the amount of money that's been brought in from all the projects that have been authorized for us to do, from the bridge to the improvements of the city, to, you know, the street forms, the paving of the streets with rubberized asphalt, which you brought to our attention as well, so we quiet the place down and make it last longer as well. And it was paid for on bargain basement prices. So Robert, thank you for everything you've done, and good luck in your retirement. And since you're a Calabassin, you're not going to get away with much. We got you on tap. Thanks.
Okay, I have no more public comment cards, but there's someone online, so.
Rosa Besser.
Okay, yes. Hi, Rosa, welcome. Hopefully you have a four-legged.
Mr. Mayor, she's not on mute, so she may have issues.
Probably rallying the four-legged pals to give a four paws up.
Rosa can join a little later.
No. Okay, all right. Why don't we, we have something for you. I don't know if you wish to speak, though, first, Robert, and say a few words, or Suzie, who always speaks well.
Well, I'm not going to need three minutes. Suzie told me we're not going to get emotional. Calabasas was home for me. Calabasas was home for me and Calabasas from whom become a family. I married in Calabasas, raised my kids in Calabasas. And I care for Calabasas and I will live in Calabasas the rest of my life. That is a sign in my home office. I'm not moving and Susie knows that. That to be said, I'll be more than happy in future to join this city as either helping with volunteer work, commissioners, or whatever it takes. I will carry on my dedication to city. I love this city. And I want to thank you all for supporting me all along. I would have not be able to do whatever you mentioned if it wasn't the council. Council always supported me for what I needed to do. When I went to council, said we have to go to Sacramento to do fundraising. We went to Washington DC for fundraising. Those were the type of deals that we had to do to bring Calabasas to attention. So I never forget in 95, when I went to Catherine's at Calabasas, they said you're in the wrong district. They're all the way north California. And that was the time that, as Terry mentioned, we tried to create a court. That to be said, the last word, thank you for everything. Calabasas is home for me and I'll be around. Thank you again.
And we are done. One of y'all goes out.
All right, get together guys. One, two.
But I did retire a week before Robert.
And you're always welcome to stay for the entire four hour meeting if you wish, Robert. All right. Now we have, there's no other members wishing to speak online before we go off. Did Rosa come back?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I know she sends great wishes. I'm sure she'll reach out to Robert privately. Tonight, we also have another celebration and an honor. We recognize Calabasas high stu- high student, high school student, Ariane Jane for winning a Southern California Edison Scholarship. It is our true pleasure to congratulate Ariane Jane from Calabasas High for being named the 2023 Edison Scholar winner. Your selection marks as one of 30 winners selected from Edison's 50,000 square mile service area spanning high schools from central California to Orange County. Edison Scholars require a minimum 3.0 GPA, a plan to pursue a STEM field in degree in college, have a financial need and live in an Edison service area. Edison Scholars seek to award students who want to be makers of tomorrow. The city council celebrates your desire to use your problem solving skills to attack the challenge of food insecurity and commend Edison for supporting all of its winners through scholarship. Mr. Jane, congratulations to you and your family. Uh, would, would you like to say a few words? But before you do, I know we have tonight, we have on behalf of Edison, we have Andrew Thomas to speak and present, and then the council will come down. We have something for you as well.
Good evening, Andrew Thomas of Southern California Edison to Mayor Shapiro, Pro Tim White, Ryan Trab, the rest of the council and staff. Uh, it's a great day to be here in Calabasas. It's always a great day to be here, uh, with these wonderful young people with a color guard and the other young person who just is retiring. Uh, we have another shining star of your city here. And our Edison Scholarship Program is something that we're very happy to go and surprise him at his school along with his family and award him a $50,000 scholarship. Uh, that does will support his efforts going forward a- as he pursues STEM field degrees. It is also an opportunity, uh, that he adds to do internships with Edison as well. So I'm sure he'll maximize this opportunity. I think he said this is your first time here in council. So you can see, uh, some chairs you can fill and the exiting, uh, city, uh, Public Works Director. And also maybe there's some chairs you might aspire to up there with the, uh, the, as you go through your studies, but we definitely want to celebrate you. And we thank the council for giving audience to this young man and his family. And let's bring him up and celebrate him. Ariane John.
First, while you're up there, I'm going to ask if there are any council comments on this item? If not, we'll go forward. Please, oh.
Just a huge congratulations on this honor.
Uh, yeah. So thank you so much. I'm really honored to be here. Uh, I never thought that as high school student, I get an opportunity to, uh, go to the city hall. But, uh, yeah, this is a great opportunity. I'd like to thank Edison. Uh, it's going to make a lot of my, uh, goals possible in college. Uh, I wouldn't be able to attend the calls I want to without the scholarship. Uh, and I'd really like to thank my mom, my sister for, uh, supporting me throughout this, uh, entire four years, um, you know, working hard in high school, pushing myself. And, uh, you know, really trying to see what's out there, what opportunities are available for me. And, um, as for college, my future plans, which again Edison makes it, uh, really possible for me. Uh, I plan to study computer science and, uh, artificial intelligence at, uh, Carney Mellon. And as, as well as a minor in business, so I can, you know, scale whatever solution that I plan to come up with. So I again, really thank you to Edison. Thank you so much. Uh, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't have this opportunity without them.
Congratulations. And stay right there. We have, uh, we have a certificate for you and we'll all come down for a quick group photo. Okay.
One, two, three here. We'll take it. We can send it.
If I can close by saying the scholarship will open up later this year. Uh, if you want a feel-good moment, go to edisonsscholars.com. You can see all 30 winners who recorded a, a short vignette, which included, uh, Ariane's presentation on how he will be tackling food insecurity. Uh, and we'll come back later on with the application for another student. So we can have a repeat moment from this great city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I didn't ask, I'll ask now. Are there, I don't have any cards. Are there any members of the public online who wish to speak on this item before we go?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have recognition of recent graduates from the perfect night on when we're talking about emergency preparedness and operations center. We are recognizing our recent graduates from the Community Emergency Response Team known as CERT program. We would like to congratulate and extend appreciation to the recent graduates from the Community Emergency Response Team CERT program. Following a major disaster, police, fire and medical professionals may not be able to meet the demand for emergency medical attention or help in the community. Residents and neighbors may need to rely upon one another to help with immediate lifesaving needs, particularly in isolated neighborhoods that may be cut off from the main transportation routes. The County of Los Angeles Fire Department Community Education, Community Emergency Response Team, known as CERT, training was developed through FEMA to provide basic fire safety and lifesaving skills to community members. The City of Calabasas partnered with the Fire Department to deliver this valuable training to community members. All of the students attended seven classes that totaled 21 hours to learn the following subjects. Disaster Preparedness, Disaster Fire Suppression, Disaster Medical Operations Part One, Disaster Medical Operations Part Two, Light Search and Rescue slash Terrorism, Disaster Psychology and Team Organization, Review Drill Simulation and Graduation. All graduates received an official certificate of completion from the Los Angeles County Fire Department. We have a city pin for each of you. I'm going to mention each of the names and hopefully I get them right. If not, you'll correct me. Congratulations to Viviana Calderon, Mike Straj, Patty Mardell, Javen Reed or Javin Reed, Steve Sokel, Scott Wimmer, Brad and Dolly Weisman. Congratulations to all of you. Unable to join us tonight, but hopefully watching on Zoom, Lonnie Alpersen, Carolyn Boge, Boge, Mario Littles, Steve Lovejoy, uh, Kirsten Rosalat, Rosala, uh, Phyllis Shear and Amy Short. Congratulations to them as well. And, uh, are there any council comments wishing, anyone wishing to make comments? Seeing none, except congratulations. Uh, are you going to give the city pins or is, are we?
I can, Mr. Mayor, unless you want to come down and do it.
A picture? Okay, we will come down all and take a picture. This is our exercise night with all the winners. Come on, or the graduates.
Okay, right here, guys. I see you guys, right?
All right. Wait one second. And tonight, um, among other months, this month is ALS Awareness Month. And, uh, we have a proclamation I'm going to read uh, on behalf of ALS Awareness Month, and hopefully we have members of the Golden West, uh, chapter here to receive that tonight. When we talk about this, we remember some Calabasas residents and a dear friend also of our Calabasas High's former coach, Ed, who has the basketball tournament here every year. It's always had that and, uh, a longtime council member and community member, Jamie Doherty. All the, who was stricken, uh, and fought this disease bravely, as well as a dear friend and community member still fighting Eric Kenter. So when I read this, I think of them and their families and many, many others. Whereas according to the National Institute of Neurological Disorders and Stroke Strategic Plan, amyotrop- amyotropics lateral sclerosis, ALS, is easier to say for me, is a disease that weakens the muscles used to move, swallow and breathe. And the estimated survival is three to five years after the onset of symptoms. And whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's National ALS Registry, an estimated 32,000 people are living with ALS in the United States with 5,000 to 6,000 people diagnosed annually. And whereas according to an article entitled Perspective Study of Military Services and Mortality from ALS, ALS affects people in all communities, but US military veteran, veterans are twice as likely to develop ALS compared to non-veterans. And whereas the Golden Gate Chapter ALS Association strives to provide the most comprehensive care and support to people living with ALS and their families so that they can confidently navigate the disease and advanced science re- scientific research for the prevention, treatment and cure of ALS. And whereas ALS Awareness Month is an opportunity to raise awareness and share information with all communities about ALS. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Calabasas does hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Awareness Month in the city of Calabasas and hereby urge all residents to take note of this observance. With us tonight is the Golden Gate Chapter ALS Association Chief Operating Officer Sherry Stroll. And I think someone else, but please welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I am Sherry Stroll, Chief Operating Officer for the Golden West Chapter of the ALS Association. What an honor to be a part of this very meaningful moment that recognizes our ALS community and the critical work underway to fight this debilitating disease. It is because of increased awareness, partnerships and advocacy efforts with cities like Calabasas that the Golden West Chapter, serving most of California and all of Hawaii, can continue to give back to those who need it most. With me tonight is my colleague, Nikki Kentor, our Community Outreach Coordinator. As the mayor mentioned, her father Eric is currently fighting ALS. And the Kentor family is persevering and advocating each and every day, not just for themselves, but for so many others who need support and guidance. For those who may not know, ALS is a progressive neurodegenerative disease that affects nerve, nerve cells in the brain and spinal cord. Every 90 minutes, someone is diagnosed and someone passes away from this debilitating disease. And as the mayor mentioned, during the course of the disease, people lose the ability to move, speak, swallow and eventually breathe. The out-of-pocket costs associated with caring for someone with ALS can easily surpass $250,000. And there are no cures and only limited treatments for ALS. The Golden West Chapter provides expert advice and assistance for people living with ALS right here in Southern California, including Calabasas. We provide more than 30 support groups each month, robust equipment loan programs, help navigating complex benefit systems and so much more. We coordinate comprehensive care partnering with ALS medical clinics. We build key partnerships with government, businesses and community organizations to raise funds and awareness and move forward legislative priorities. All the while, we partner with clinicians, researchers and biotechs to aggressively pursue new treatments and cures. Our work, just like yours, centers on excellence, integrity and dedication. Values we can all agree help make a lasting impact. And philanthropy fuels everything that we do. And I invite you to help me, help us fight ALS by going to ALSAGoldenwest.org to make a donation or just get involved as, as the mayor mentioned. I thank you for recognizing May as ALS Awareness Month as it is only together that we will defeat ALS. Thank you.
I'm going to go down and just see if hopefully.
Thank you so much. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item, Madam Clerk, online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Move to council announcements. Mayor Tim Weintraub.
Last night, we had an amazing event put on by the Mayor's Youth Council. It was talking about fentanyl awareness, and everyone who attended received basically an opiate overdose response kit with Narcon in there. So we have, David and I have packets to share with our council colleagues. And this event will be, it was recorded by our media department, so it'll be on CTV. It's really, really worthwhile for everybody to watch. Whatever you think you knew going into this presentation, your mind was just blown away by the information that was given. And a huge shout out to Mari for helping our Mayor's Youth Council bring this event to the public. And just the last thing that I want to say is, when David and I expressed wanting to have an event like this, it was not just an event for students and not just an adult, and not just an event for adults. It was an event where everyone can be together and hear the same information. And our J-Team was there, and they did a fabulous job. And we had a speaker who lost a child to a fentanyl overdose. So I highly urge everyone to watch the presentation when it's on CTV. But just, oh, here's a picture. So it's our Mayor's Youth Council, our speaker, and the J-Team, so, and us. So it was great. And just early congratulations to our students in the community who will be graduating. Graduations are already starting, so that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Albert.
Thank you. I'd just like to mention how important the Mayor's Youth Council is to this city, to our council, and how we support it. Last night, I attended, it was unbelievable. And for those of us that are parents and those of us that circulate, we should all be aware of fentanyl and how to prevent it and how to help it when someone's in an overdose. If you have that situation, I think you can reach out to any one of us, and we can provide support. It was just overwhelming. So as far as announcements are concerned, I was spent the past, I think it's four days or so, in Indian Wells with City Manager Kendon and Councilmember Buzagian. It was a good experience for me as an academy, to become a more informed council person on a variety of levels. And I really, like a sponge soaked a lot of it up, and look forward to being a better and more informed council person. And lastly, the Wine Festival. I did come to discover that Steve Raddedaro has been in charge of that and worked on getting vendors to participate in it since 1993. And that's the reason why it was so successful. I just want to give a shout out to him. And as far as announcements, I think that's it for me tonight.
Thank you very much. Next, Councilmember Buzagian.
I don't have any announcements, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kraut.
I have one announcement, but beforehand, I just want to say thank you very much for sharing this. And for those of the public that are wondering, naloxone or Narcan, that's the brand name, just two years ago, they were only available as a prescription. I was trained in first aid and CPR, and we weren't allowed to get these back then. And so we've come a long way. And so if you're involved in, in any first aid intensive training, if you're involved in any organizations where first aid is paramount, this is, this is an amazing step forward for all of us, so thank you. My announcement tonight, though, I want to announce on behalf of the Las Vergenes Unified School District and the Foundation, which is the fundraising arm, if you will, of the Las Vergenes Unified School District, they're holding their annual fundraiser, Rock the District. It's going to be June 3rd at 7:00 PM at the Sagebrush Cantina. It's a great time. I was there last year. I'll be there this year. I hope you'll come join us. You can find more information at rockthedistrict.org or thefoundationlvs.org, or if you end up on the school's website at lvusd.org, I'm sure you'll find a link there too. So no excuses for not being able to find a ticket. Please come join us. It's gonna be a great night.
Thank you. One of the nicest photos I remember from last year was you and your lovely bride. Speaking of the schools, tomorrow night is the last opportunity for this year. You get to see, and especially seniors, graduating at the Performing Arts Education Center. It's the final music program for choir a cappella and begins at 7 o'clock. And the tickets will be on sale officially now for the Fourth of July fireworks event, so look on our city site. Very happy about that, as well as the fun, fun run and day events. It's only five and a half, not even six weeks away, so please take a look at that. And I also want to acknowledge for those, thank our staff for putting on a very nice, appropriate, short, but respectful event this Friday, the 26th, 9:30 AM, right in back of City Hall in our very own Veterans Garden, is a very brief but respectful Memorial Day program. The community is welcome, invited. It will be, as I mentioned, brief but very nice and respectful. And on that note, I wish everybody a wonderful holiday Memorial Weekend, Memorial Day Weekend. And next, we'll move on to oral communication and public comment. And I do have a couple speaker cards here. If anyone else wishes to speak in public comment, please fill out a card and give it to our city clerk. And there are those online, we will call on you as well. All right, first of all, we have Mark Levinson from the Chamber of Commerce. Well, welcome. Think I saw you today.
Yes, thank you all. And again, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Actually, there's three things I'd like to mention. The United Chambers of Commerce, every year, hold a small business awards breakfast, and this year, the Chamber is pleased to honor Florentina's Flower Shop. And the event will be held on June 2. It's each chamber is an opportunity to nominate someone who's done extraordinary things for that chamber. We're proud, proud to announce we are honoring them this year for all they've done to the community. On the 22nd, at our luncheon at Cambria, the comments is going to present their plan for the future in the next 25 years. It's the second edition. They began the first one a couple of months ago with a plan. We're getting more details now, so if you're interested in what the comments has planned, the word way forward, it's a good place to come and meet people and also support the chamber. And the last thing is, next week, Chamber is awarding two scholarships to high school students from Calabasas High who exemplify incredible, incredible achievement, both academic in the city, in the county, and their compassion for themselves and others. And we're pleased to present two scholarships that night. And I can tell you, from having read the applications, there are incredible young people going to our schools, and we issue be proud of all of them. It was very, very difficult to narrow that down to two people who accept them this year. And the money came from our bowling tournament, and we're hoping next year not to have two, but perhaps four or five scholarships for these students, and they're very, very deserving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Maxine Strauss, welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Maxine Strauss, as you just mentioned, and I live in Calabasas. I have, I'm here to speak about the Cruzan Project, the proposed apartment project, to which I am opposed. We often speak about how the proposed apartment project will affect attendance at the Calabasas Senior Center, which is dear to my heart, due to the loss of 100 parking spots approximately, or 120. We must, however, be mindful, I think, of the fact that the parking lot not only affects the senior center, but the entire city of Calabasas Civic Center, including City Hall, the library, and Founders. And so this evening, I would like to address how the lost parking spaces will affect Founders Hall. On the city's website, Founders Hall is advertised in part as a quote, "multipurpose meeting space with modern AV capabilities with seating capacity for 220 people," end of quote. And this creates convenience for our residents, as well as an income for the city. But how many of those 220 people will find a satisfactory place to park? Besides hosting savvy seniors' social events and classes, which have attendance too large for the senior center to accommodate, Founders Hall has been used by the public for wedding receptions, birthday parties, graduation receptions, and bar mitzvah parties. How is the city going to sell this venue for these events if sufficient parking is not going to be available? However, homeowners associations within the city have used this space for their annual meetings. Will they find adequate places to park? Founders Hall has been used as a county of LA vote center, providing convenient ways to vote. But it isn't convenient if there isn't enough parking. The Mayor's Youth Council and the Calabasas Film Festival have held their events at this space as recently as last night with a mayor's youth council meeting, and ample parking is a must. The State of the City address has used Founders Hall as a convenient venue for Calabasas citizens who wish to attend in person. They will need more parking spaces and most likely be available to park their cars if that Cruzan Project is taken seriously and moves ahead to reality. So these are some of the detriments that will be, that the loss of parking will cause to Founders Hall, but we can't forget that the senior center, the library, the city hall, all will be negatively affected by the loss of parking spaces due to the proposed Cruzan apartment project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mayor Emeritus Dennis Washburn. Welcome back.
Dennis Washburn, Calabasas. And I wanted to talk about, not the budget that you're into, but about the capital improvement budget that the Planning Commission had to deal with at our last meeting. Our job was to certify that it was consistent with the general plan, and that's the basis of my conversation with you tonight. I would like to have us look deeply into the need to anticipate what our next general plan is going to be setting in the way of ground rules. The last general plan was created over the 2006 to 2008 timeframe. We've already been required, the bunch of us, Planning Commission and council, to approve a housing element and to put the circulation element and the public safety element to back it up in order to pass the hurdles that are being set for us in Sacramento these days. So I'm asking that, as you're dealing with the capital improvement budget, that you take a look at what happened at the Planning Commission meeting, where we were all trying to figure out, how can we help deal with anticipating what our budget needs are going to be, not only operating budget, but also the capital improvement budget? It is clearly allocated because of the, the, I guess, the spreadsheets that we saw with each of the different accounts for the different missions to be accomplished. I'm asking that you consider what the technological requirements in the next 10 years are going to be in housing, workforce housing in particular, which has to be made affordable. And our current method for doing that is actually highly constrained. I think our next 200 housing units should be technically advanced and should be affordable for workforce folks, and that should be in the discussions that you have. In addition to that, I would say that fighting wildfires is the next important aspect of public safety, as well as just protection of all of our homes. And the technology that's available now to deal with detection and suppression and significantly recovery should be a part of our capital improvement thinking and our budget thinking. And lastly, it's communications, because we know that our circumstances, we're highly stressed during the Woolsey Fire and the Old Topanga Fire, and in 93, if you can think about it, the Topanga Fire. So there's technology available now that can detect, suppress, and deal with the consequences of fire, wildfire suppression. So I'm asking you to consider that in your deliberations, and thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Priscilla Lee. Welcome, Priscilla.
Three minutes, okay. Thank you so much for what you do, what you've been doing, and, and the city is just amazing. So I'm Priscilla Lee, and I live in Calabasas, in love with my family. And we'd like for you to address this five-story building that is being proposed. And I'm, I'm not going to read from my letter that you've received already, but there are several issues, as, as mentioned before, like the evacuation process in case of fires, so many parking lot spaces being taken away from us. And so if people want to go and come and do business, it's how they, how they're gonna park. They're gonna park on the street if there's space, I guess. But that's annoying, for sure. In addition, we'd like for you to encourage residents and businesses, including the Las Verges School District, to either remove the artificial turf that they already have or to refrain from considering to install it in the first place. It's petroleum product, and it's got numerous toxic chemicals in it. And that they're all harmful to, not only to the environment, but to people who want to play or sit on it. According to the sodsolutions.com, the following hazards are true of artificial turf. There are several environmental concerns, they say, this is a quotation, associated with AT, including loss of wildfire habitat, contaminated runoff, migration of synthetic materials. Contaminants that are harmful to aquatic rock, life such as sink, have been found in stored water. And from the runoff from the artificial turf, both infill particles and broken synthetic grass fibers can migrate away from yards and plain fields, contributing to microplastic pollution. Something new to me. There's a heat issue also. Artificial turf can be much hotter than natural gas, grass, natural gas too, maybe, natural grass on a warm day. Experts note that high temperatures may lead to potential life-threatening and heat-related illnesses for users, especially athletes. A number of studies have measured high temperatures on artificial turf, some as high as 160 degrees. Please educate our citizens about how harmful artificial turf is and recommend putting environmentally friendly grass, live plants, and so forth instead. We need the oxygen generated by our live plants. And our students who attend Las Vergenes Unified School District do not deserve to be harmed by trying to play on this kind of grass. And I, I know that the district has only put in some of the schools so far, and I encourage them to not put anymore in. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And I have no other public speaker cards in person, seeing no one running up to the clerk. I'll ask, are there any members of the public online who wish to speak on any non-agendised item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Asha Patel.
Okay, welcome.
Hi. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I am a resident of Calabasas, and I also am a student at Calabasas High School. My name is Asha Patel, and I've been working with the LVUSD Middle Schools to implement my gold award project, Lights, Camera, Action Eating Disorder Awareness, with help of Mr. Shapiro. I've been able to present my work, and tonight, I hope, I hope to advocate for its expansion with everyone's help. I created a curriculum about a year ago with five episodes that talked about types of eating disorders, symptoms, resources, social media use, and the healthcare system, as well as quizzes to check for understanding. You may have seen this project recently on Spectrum News or the Las Vergenes Enterprise News from Valley News Group. I work with Ms. Reynolds, a seventh-grade teacher at AC Stella, and according to the surveys that came out of her and some A-Rite students, her students benefited greatly from the curriculum, both in body image and knowledge. I was able to turn this project with the help of my partner, Oscar Melendez, into a nonprofit organization, Middle Mental Health, or M2 Health. We are currently managing a team of 19 people who have worked on social media, workshops for middle schools, new curriculums, our website and graphic design, and outreach to different schools across the state. Our website and graphic design and outreach to different schools across the state. Our goals include spreading the eating disorder awareness and other new curriculums into middle schools outside of L B O S D and including L B U three as well. If you have middle schoolers or even high schoolers, we would love to encourage them to take part in our workshops. And the information can be found on our website, M two health or Instagram, which is M two health project. We also have a newsletter that can be found on these sites as well. Eating disorders are a serious problem, which is why I thought to bring it to council. They're the second deadliest mental illness right next to addiction and it is Mental Health Awareness Month in May as well. The stigma of this topic is so severe for kids in our community that they are unable to help receive the help that they need. And I would love for everyone to be aware of this for their children and our nonprofit has resources for parents as well. Additionally, as part of M two health, I'm coordinating, coordinating a citywide body positivity fair for the Calabasas community. With help from hopefully the mayor's youth council next week when I talk to them. More information will be shared soon, but the goal is to bring the community together against eating disorders and mental illness and stigmatized body image. We will have games and activities for kids, performances and so much more. Please come to support the city, M two health and body positivity and our goal is to hold this event probably in late fall or early spring. I really appreciate you listening to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and in case we had some broadband or technical difficulties, if you could provide the contact or website information to our city clerk, that would be appreciated for anyone who would like it. Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have John Swara, but it may be John, so we'll find out.
Okay, please identify yourself. Which Swara is gracing us tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. It, it is John. So, but Joanne is sitting right here too and she may want to say something. But good evening. And we've lived in Calabasas since nineteen seventy-five, so we've, we've seen a lot over the years. With respect to our city. And when we moved here, Joanne insisted on moving to Cala, to Calabasas. Because it was part of the Los Verges School District and that was a, a really good move for us. Because all of our kids have gone to the Los Verges schools and were able to use that to get onto college and so on and so forth. But tonight I want to talk about a, another issue in our community. And that is about the, uh, the baseball league, only league baseball. That's being played at Lupin Hill Elementary School. I want you to know that I've coached Little League Baseball. I've been involved with youth sports and, and, and even the Boy Scouts, Troop One Twenty Seven when it was, was out of Calabasas here. And so but the Little League Baseball at Lupin Hill Elementary School is generating a tremendous amount of traffic. For those narrow streets that we have in our community over there. People park on both sides of the streets. Just this last week, I was driving up Adamore. And about three or four cars before the entrance into the Lupin Hill School. Some man was standing there in the street with the car door on his pickup truck wide open. And, uh, and waited a couple of minutes and finally I, I tapped my horn. I didn't do the New York thing and, and lean on the horn. I just tapped it. And boy, did he give me a bad look. But in any event, he got out of the way. And the reason why I couldn't go around him is there were people exiting the school. And so they're coming down Adamore and there was no way for two cars for me to go into the other lane. So, uh, and the number of cars that park on Adamore and a park more during school days. After school is, is tremendous. And then they're also on weekends. It's like there's a school open house every day with the, with the car parking there. So there are too many people and cars on these narrow streets and it's causing dangerous conditions. I would like to see the number of baseball fields being used that Lupin Hill cut down and the hours reduced so that the trash, the traffic is reasonable in the neighborhood. Uh, the other concern is that, uh, you know, Dennis mentioned about fires is that we have file wildfires that come through our neighborhood and we had two houses burned right opposite the right opposite the school. And with all of that traffic, if we had a fire come through, it would be, it would be terrible. I guess I've got five seconds, huh? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you both very much. Um, all right. Any, any other members of the public wishing to speak and any non-agendised item?
No, Mr. Mayor, not.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to consent items, one through four. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any consent items? I'll start here. Number two, okay. And Mayor Protom? Oh, that's right. Number three, and I will pull number four. So why don't we go ahead and we'll start with two in order? Pass. All right. And we would need to have member of the staff present to answer questions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number two is a request. And let me get to the title of it here. It's a adoption of resolution two oh two three one eight five three to establish transportation impact thresholds. Uh, this resolution simply outlines at what level we need to carefully scrutinize traffic. And at what level we should, uh, allow it through. Uh, referring to the document on page four. Uh, residential and office projects located within a low V N T generating area may be presumed to have a less than significant impact because they are assumed to have similar travel patterns as existing development. Uh, the areas that are defined by the map as low V N T generating areas are pretty much everything within reach of the one oh one. Which would include all of Agora Road, all of Calabasas Road. Uh, it's a very large, wide swath. Um, I'm really concerned with this statement in there regarding the screening, uh, that, uh, that it gives the wrong impression. That, that traffic is not something to be deeply studied for projects like that. In addition, um, under the thresholds that they establish on page five. Um, staff is recommending the use of a fifteen percent threshold. Rather than adopting the Los Angeles County sixteen point eight percent threshold. Um, and it was explained to me that that would provide more flexibility is what the staff report says. Uh, but as I understand it, that would be more flexibility or, um, with the bandwidth of adopting and accepting projects as they come through. Uh, I might be misunderstanding some of this, but I think this document needs a lot more study from us. And I don't think it belongs on consent. And certainly I appreciate Tatiana being here to speak with us tonight. And if I've misstated anything, please correct me. If you want to clarify, please do. But I would recommend to our council that this item be taken off consent and considered at a further date.
Thank you, Councilmember Kraut for your comments. Of course, you can postpone the item and we can present it in more detail in the next day. But I would like to address some of your comments. Um, this, um, resolution in front of you explains the guidelines the city will be following. In analyzing the project. The resolution is also refers to the state law and the secret requirements that the project need to be analyzed for the V N T. And the threshold of fifteen percent was set up. Um, for, uh, we, it's recommended by Traffic and Transportation Commission. We had two meetings in, uh, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Presenting the analysis and, um, the fifteen percent is the state recommended threshold. And the, the Traffic and Transportation Commission recommends to follow that. Los Angeles County adopted sixteen point eight, but they follow the slightly different goals on the, uh, clean, um. Let me just get the correct reference. In California, Air Resource Board research. Uh, for eighty percent reduction of greenhouse emissions by twenty fifty. That's why they adopted sixteen point eight percent threshold. And, uh, Calabasas is recommending to follow the state guidelines with fifteen percent.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments or questions on this?
I was just gonna say, I'm okay bringing it back on a non-consent item. We want to just discuss it a little longer.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm fine with that too.
Okay, um, so are you clear what we're asking for or what councilmember Kraut is asking for? Is if we are bringing it back so that there is additional information, I believe, correct?
Yeah, I'd be hoping for a staff report and a further explanation of what our options are specifically. Um, in regards to the LA County adoption, is that something that we could consider? And, and how, uh, perhaps also looking at the, uh, the screening requirements and how those were established. Uh, the presentation that you've done for the Transportation Committee, perhaps that could be adapted and done here for council as well.
Uh, we, we absolutely can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It sounds, anyone else? Otherwise, you have direction and thank you very much. It's a very good report. We'll look forward to additional information a later date. You may want to stay up there. Oh, no, not necessarily. All right, next, Councilmember Visagen, item three.
Yes, I'm one of the councilmembers who asked if this could be put on the agenda. This is a very, um, this is one of the worst bills that has appeared in the state legislature this session. Uh, SB four twenty-three would essentially be yet another bill that takes away local control and discretion in housing. And it, uh, adds to the number of things that can be ministerially or approved, which means that basically um, all public hearings and environmental reviews and notices are simply, um, not given. And developers would be able in certain situations to come into the city and just get over the counter approvals. Uh, for developments without proper public vetting. It's a trend in California that's gone on in the last few years and this bill has, I think, a very good chance of passing. The League of California Cities has taken a position in opposition and has asked cities around the state to oppose it as well. And I hope the council will, uh, join the growing number of cities that are opposing this kind of, um, heavy handedness from the state in an attempt to destroy, uh, local control over land use issues.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments on this one? Councilmember Albrecht?
Uh, regarding this, just today I got an email from the, uh, from Jeff Kiranen from the Cal Cities. And it, uh, actually, uh, had some updates in the Senate Appropriations Committee. And he has requested a certain letter to be sent out, uh, councils, uh, if we're going to take this course of action, which I certainly approve of my, uh, myself, uh, we would be good, well served to amend, uh, the letter that we're going to do to reflect the update in the Senate today.
Okay, I, I haven't seen any changes.
I think the update just said where it was in the legislature. It didn't change any of the language.
I'll show it to you.
Okay.
Did it change?
No, I think our letter, it's just, I think where it is in the process, but we can double check.
It would be appropriate to approve, oh, sorry to interrupt. It'd be appropriate to, uh, if the council is in agreement, approve up opposing the bill and direct staff to finalize the proper language for a letter to be as robust as it can be.
With a notation that is going to a vote in the next few days, so let's make sure that letter goes out as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
And so I see consensus on that.
I'll move the, uh, item.
I'll second.
Well, why don't we wait till we finish all so we can move them all together? If that's okay?
Oh, yes, sir.
I had asked, uh, anything further on this one? Sounds like we're all in agreement there. I, Tatiana, if I can ask you to come up, I had asked to pull up, uh, number four. And that goes back to something Councilmember Albrecht and I had brought up before. I had brought up a number of times. Robert Yalda is not here, so I can't question him on it, darn. But I had sent him information on this quite a bit, a bit ago and I keep harping on it, but there is a program which has been used in our neighboring cities and other cities, uh, known as the Cool Streets Project. Which pertains to resurfacing and it does three things. It is a less expensive alternative. It lasts longer and it helps reduce temperature and therefore affects the climate, uh, climate change and greenhouse gas emissions and on and on and on. So I've asked for that rather than just the standard resurfacing that we're doing. And I saw that in here as part of our future plans with, uh, with SB one. And I would like to see, uh, if, if there's support for this, obviously, to me it I, I don't, I don't understand. To me, it's a no brainer that we would save money, help the environment and it would last longer. So to me, it's a win, win and win and it's been tested as close as Woodland Hills and is recently done in the last year. So I know we talked about it on the Sustainability Task Force as well. So that would be something I would like to see included. Which is not. And I guess I'll ask if you've even had a, an opportunity to look at that at this point.
Uh, we started doing our research. The product is, uh, more expensive, but I know the technology keeps moving forward. And maybe we can find a different product, but there, there are the concerns that we're having with the, uh, with the streets. The striping needs to be looked at because you have to stretch through differently. If you have a cool pavement, it's just lighter in color. And, um, we still need to do a little bit more research to, um, to see what kind of, um, product we can bring to Calabasas and what streets we can, um, to propose for a service like this. Uh, right now, the, the program that we are, um, referring into, in the resolution is just following our pavement management plan.
Right. And I, all due respect, um, the information that I provided, bless you, a, a while ago was a less expensive alternative. There may be grants involved that I'm not aware of, but less expensive. And it was longer lasting. So I don't know what the issues are. It wasn't just lighter color. The material was the, the reason it was, was a called a cool street project. And I know I provided that from our LA City Council member next door, provided all that information. I provided it to Rob, to Robert. I'm blaming Robert. No, 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 not blaming anyone, but I'd like to see us at least have the opportunity to thoroughly vet this before we agree to pass it off for another year, which is what I'm potentially seeing here. So that's my comment briefly. Um, the city manager, I wish you look like you wanted to say something.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, at the request of the Sustainability Task Force. Uh, at our next meeting is when we were going to present information on the cool streets. Um, uh, resurfacing, um, material and, and the programs. We just haven't scheduled that yet. So we'd like to present that to council. Um, Tatiana, what I don't know is the timeframe on this. I, I know that SB one requires this resolution. But can that be amended? I mean, or does, does a cool street paving affect this at all with the, with the SB one monies?
Uh, no, it doesn't. And, uh, SB one will allow us to make modifications to the project. We can, um, remove project or modify the scope of work later if we choose so.
Okay, that's helpful. Any other council comments or questions? Councilmember Albrecht?
Um, the research I did on it, there were some negatives, but there were some positives. I mean, it works both ways. Um, but it certainly, uh, was emphasized that it lasts longer. And if it lasts longer, that would offset any difference in the cost, it would increase more. And also just the fact that it keeps the neighborhood cooler, um, and quieter. So it would be nice to see from your side, uh, all the benefits so we can make a informed decision on it.
Mayor Protom, wine drop.
I, I know there's pros and cons to it and I know you talked about like new technology. I know some of the issues before. I think it's absolutely worthwhile to look at, but there's some issues with like the brightness and it's reflecting in drivers' eyes. So I think there's probably even since it's been installed in Woodland Hills, probably new technology that would be, that would meet the goals of the council.
Yeah, I'm sorry. City manager, yes.
Just looking at the city attorney on this, I think as a point of order, the item under consideration is SB one. And so we'll come back at a future date on the, the close street programs. Okay.
I think that's right. We can approve the project list and then get more information and then return with an item to approve the cool streets.
That's fine.
Object with more info.
That's fine with me. Any other council comments or questions? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items one through four in the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and then I'll ask for a motion.
Can I just clarify, a couple of these items are being tabled, correct? So they're two separate motions?
Just one. Just, just one. I'll make a complete motion if I can, if you'll give me a shot at it. I'd like to move that we I'd like to move that we table item two to a future date. Um, and a, as a non-consent item, as a public hearing, I guess we would call it.
Discussion.
Public discussion, thank you. Um, and also move that we approve items one, three, and four. With the further note that item three, the letter regarding SB four twenty-three, uh, be reviewed for latest information from Cal Cities as of today and issued post haste.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tatiana, very much. Next, we will move on to new business. Public meeting regarding Landscape Maintenance District number twenty-two and Landscape Lighting Act Districts, numbers twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-seven, and thirty-two assessment proceedings. Madam Clerk, are there any changes in the staff report? I'm sorry.
It's Tatiana. I don't think, I don't think there are any changes, Mr. Mayor.
Tatiana, you're back. You're getting more exercise than we did with the photos. Okay. Are there any changes to the staff report?
No changes to the staff.
All right, I'll move to council comments. Seeing none on this, any council comments? Seeing none. Uh, I'll ask if there are any members of the public either in person. I don't have a card, so it won't be.
None on line either, Mr. Mayor.
None on line, okay. Therefore, I will ask, I, I don't believe we vote on this. I think it's just an informational item, correct? So thank you very much. This is the good, good motion. Thank you for your thorough report.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six. First, I'll ask, does anyone need a break?
Can we take a quick break, please?
Yeah, why don't we take a break till ten till? All right, we'll adjourn till ten minutes till nine. Thank you. Welcome back. We're starting, it is eight fifty. We'll move on to item number six, to prove updated City, City of Calabasas Emergency, Emergency Operations Plan. And we have our own Mike Dyer and consultant Dave Jeffers, Jeffries from the Municipal Resource Group, MRG, to make a presentation. Welcome. Oh, and Debbie is here as well. Debbie Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I gotta do the, uh, the share here real quick. And I think we're good to go. Okay. My mic, it's on. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, City Manager, City Staff, ladies and gentlemen.
Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Dave Jeffries to do some introductions.
All right, well, thank you very much for being here again, Dave Jeffries. Um, just a little background on me. I've been working with Calabasas here for a little while, and and we have some more things lined up. But my background is, uh, actually as of this week, forty-one years in public safety. Uh, most of that background in law enforcement, I'm also law enforcement, retired as a captain. Uh, but in the emergency management world over the last ten years, especially, uh, Certified Emergency Manager, California's new credentialing program as a professional emergency manager with a master's degree in this area as well. And then I still keep my hands dirty as an incident commander within the North Bay Incident Management Team north of San Francisco, with about thirty-five deployments up there because that area likes to burn as well as areas down here. So, um, working with Mike and Debbie, I appreciate all their work on this. We have developed this updated emergency operations plan. And really what it is, is, um, hopefully, based on template developed specifically for Los Angeles County municipalities. And that was very helpful, both in saving time and money for Calabasas and having a, a template that was created for communities in this county based on your hazard profile and the way things operate down here. Uh, but still required a lot of customizing, uh, working with your staff to make sure it reflects Calabasas' stance on emergency response. Uh, and and there were some updates really how things had changed uh, from your older plan in terms of how you were structured that we had to address as well. Uh, once we had this ready, it was reviewed by your Public Safety Commission. We had a public hearing as well. And I understand your Public Safety Task Force has reviewed this as well. So I know you have the emergency operations plan. We're not gonna go into in great detail, but the, uh, it's two parts. Part one is the basic plan that really talks about how emergency management works, uh, how your city is set up. Uh, this is where we talk a little bit about the particular hazards you would see in Calabasas compared to some other jurisdiction. Also, some of the administrative part of this about plan maintenance, the idea is that you would be coming back and looking at this plan every time you have to use it, or at least every couple of years, to make sure it stays up to date. Um, and one example of the things we talked about in there is really looking in at the difference between field response and, and emergency operation center response. And as I mentioned, I work in both areas these days. Um, where you'll notice in the field level, we talk right away about the word command. Uh, and this is where in your setup, LA Sheriff and LA County Fire are your lead agencies for most of those field responses. But when you talk about the Emergency Operations Center, as opposed to being focused on one particular incident, it's the term management rather than command, coordination, support, and really focused on the entire community. You know, normally right here with a fire, you got one incident, but with an earthquake, you could have multiple incidents. And again, the city focused on your entire community. Part two dives into what you are set up here to do with your Emergency Operations Center in terms of how you activate, how you're gonna operate, and then provides a number of tools we'll talk about very briefly. Uh, but where you are at this point is that your primary emergency operations center is here in this facility. Uh, your secondary is just around the corner. And there's currently an effort to develop a mobile trailer that can be used if you had to find a third location to set up in a large disaster. Part of this with the Emergency Operations Center, too, is discussing with your staff and how you would respond based on the severity of the event. Uh, and this is where the activation levels come in. Um, a minimum activation for you might be just four or five staff people in the EOC, monitoring and involved in a lesser event. But for a large-scale event, you would be all hands on deck and you'd have a lot of folks in here. And to give you some idea of how we're set up in this one is we've included for the presentation an org chart specific to your Emergency Operations Center, uh, laying out all the various positions in there. Uh, the, the management team under the EOC Director and five separate teams or sections that we refer to them as that work together to support your community during the emergency. And to make this a little easier for you, uh, these are all the positions that we've identified in your EOC. And in terms of providing support, part of what we went through with the template was to modify position checklist to match how you're set up and to, to support the positions you have. So in this emergency operations plan, all the positions listed on the screen right now have their own position checklist to support uh, your staff in times of need. Another example of the tools we provide in here is this is referred to as a planning P. And this is specific to emergency operations centers that drives the, really the whole planning process during a shift. And, and with your emergency operations center, as we do in the field, there's two things going on. One is you're responding to the event that's in front of you, the fire, uh, the earthquake, whatever. And during that same shift, you're also developing the plan for the next team or the next shift to come in. And that's where this planning P drives that whole planning process, uh, runs specifically by the planning chief to drive this, but involves all of your EOC staff to work through this process and get to a new emergency operations plan. In addition to this, uh, we've went through and provided, uh, new forms, both in terms of what would be in your EOC action plan, as well as other boards and documents that help you track the status of the emergency. Uh, there's agendas involved in this, as well as, um, sample proclamations and other documents to support your response. And with that, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you all, and thank you for that. And if I didn't introduce properly, of course, Mike Dyer is our Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Director, and Debbie Larson, our Public Safety Coordinator as well. So thank you for being here. I'll turn to, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub first.
Thank you so much for this presentation, um, just for everyone's benefit. There's been so much work done on this. I think that the community could finally really, really feel comfortable with the progress that's been made. Um, I know David and I are the Public Safety Task Force, and every time we have a meeting, we leave just so impressed with the work that's being done. So I finally feel like we're in a really good place. I was just wondering if you can give an update on the timeline for the mobile unit? I know there have been some backorder issues, but I think that's important for people to understand.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub, the, the last update we had was with three months. They had some of the equipment ordered, but they're still waiting because of supply chain issues. So, um, we're not waiting for the trailer, though. So we're just making plans now to have an alternative EOC if we, if we need to have it. That trailer, we can't have it soon enough, but, um, the next disaster out there is not gonna wait for the trailer either.
Great. Okay, thank you. Right, it's important for everyone to understand that we're planning for the EOC to be here or at the senior center. But if we can't be physically here because of the disaster, that we're equipped to be wherever we need to be.
And, and the contractor did say that they can supply a trailer in the meantime. So we can get our hands on a trailer. They, they would let us borrow their trailer, as long as it weren't already being used, but we can borrow their trailer.
Great, thank you so much.
I was just gonna add quickly. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub. I completely agree. It's a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of very positive solutions. We have a, a bigger book than the rest of our colleagues at this point, uh, which has been a fun read, but a great, great, great effort and great results. So thank you to all of you. And it's, it's fantastic. Councilmember Visagen.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have any questions.
Councilmember Albrecht.
This is just fantastic. I think we've all been waiting for this for a long time. There's really a few times in my life that I felt helpless. And I think, uh, when we had Molsy and we were told to evacuate, and I had to tell my wife, and then I had to tell the kids because they're in Thousand Oaks, I mean, all this. And then we tried to get out, the chaos that was going on, and then trying to get back in and proving we were residents, uh, the whole thing was a mess. So this is really the bible for us, and I know we'll have additions to it. I had some questions. I'm sure other council members have a question. It's a great start, more than we ever would have expected. Thank you for all the hard work and all the people that contributed to it.
Do you have questions tonight or you mean in the future?
Sure, I do. I have a couple.
Okay, please.
You know what I'd like to see? Um, I'd like to see that one diagram where we had the, uh, all the pillars. Yeah, this one here. I'd like to see an overlay of that with who the individuals are at City Hall that fill those roles and outside. Because right now they're just titles. They're not people to me.
That, in, in the emergency operations plan, that's intentional because of the personnel turnover you get in organization. But yeah, separately, especially for your city staff, to have a list of who is designated to fill those positions is critical and, and could be able to maintain that simply and easily. And that's really, when I was here before, we did some EOC training for your staff, and we were training them based on the sections they would be assigned to. So yeah, you do want that personnel list as part of this.
And, and we do have names. We just didn't want to put them out there tonight. But we, I could definitely supply the staff with names. We have names, um, by just about every position. And I would tell you, in the incident command system, if you don't have, if you're up at the top and you're the incident commander and you need a safety officer or liaison officer, and you don't have anybody, you have to do all three. But we have names and
Okay.
we're, and we're in actively this last year after Dave did the training. Uh, last year, Debbie and I have embarked on training each of the section chiefs in this org chart to just reinforce what we learned in the training with Dave. And we've gone throughout this last nine, ten months, training the section chiefs, training a liaison officer, training agency reps, even the council training, you know, the operations training we did. So coming in January, I'm, I'm thinking we're going to, we're gonna up, up the, uh, the stress a little bit and do some exercising based on what we learned last year and what we've learned throughout this year.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that because when the, the emergency happens, everybody needs to get on board. And there's no second chances. Um, I know we have three different levels of emergencies, but just for argument's sake, let's just say the middle level. Who receives the communication from the state? Would that be, um, City Manager? He's the EOC Director? Will you receive those?
Yeah, so the decision to open the EOC for Calabasas is a local decision. All emergencies are local. So it's not the state requesting Calabasas to activate. It's Calabasas activating and notifying LA County. And then if enough, most counties of two or more cities activate, then the county activates. And then they're the ones in, in discussions with the reasoner, the state EOCs.
And sometimes the county activates first, too, like some of the floods that we had in the early, in January, in the early spring. The county had already activated.
Well, and the city, though, receives that information, the primary contact.
We, we get emails from the county. Debbie and I get emails, uh, that they're activated. So.
Okay, um. There was one more thing we talked about offline a little bit, and that was in the event of a shooting. And that's an emergency in itself, and the potential of adding an annex or an additional, uh, portion of this is the plan becomes more filled out, more mature. But I think that's important to put on the plan right away. But thank you for all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on, um, City Manager, me, you wish to say something?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, just, uh, Councilmember Albrecht, just a comment. And if you could go back to the, the slide of the, uh, EOC org chart, please. One of the things that we realized, Councilmember, last year, as we started doing training, uh, working with, with Dave, Mike, and Debbie, is we had a very, uh, uh, very much extended or larger org chart for our EOC. And one of the things that we realized real, real quickly is that in the event of an emergency that lasted twenty-four hours, then forty-eight hours, then three or four or five days, uh, we would burn out our employees very quickly. And so what we did is we compressed that, that org chart and then started doubling up in those positions. And so our, our goal is to train too deep, at least too deep, possibly three deep if we can. And that way, if there's a multi-day emergency, we can give respite and, and rest to different positions and rotate in every twelve hours.
Excellent.
So just wanted to make that clear.
That's kind of like a depth chart on a sports team, right?
Where you have multiple players. And knowing you're doing to do twelve-hour shifts, and they rack up pretty, pretty quickly, I'm sure. Thank you.
Yeah, one, one more quickly. Sorry to take so much time. That, uh, temporary van that we could get, um,
Yeah.
the vehicle, where would that be from? Is it local? Do they have to drive it in from quite a distance?
Debbie, you know, Rosie has it?
No.
I'll find out. I think it's somewhere in, in Los Angeles, so it would probably take. I, I don't want to say. I don't want to say, but I, I'll check, I'll check with, uh, Rosie and get back to you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowe.
Uh, thank you. I have a lot of the same questions that, uh, Councilmember Albrecht just shared. And I understand the reluctance at this point to assign names because they're going to be fluid. But, for example, in the top right-hand corner of this chart is the, the Disaster Council?
Yeah.
Who's the Disaster Council?
That's a good question. It's, it's actually in the nineteen ninety-one municipal code, the emergency code, and the Disaster Council is made up of the mayor, the Emergency Services Director, the Assistant Emergency Services Director, chiefs from fire, law. And then there's a piece in there that says business leaders, uh, who have emergency responsibility. Now, I'm trying to still figure that one out, too, but we're going to, uh, that's, that's what's written in the Muni code right now. And I think in, in the near future, there's updates ahead, and, uh, we're gonna probably suggest some updates to, uh, recognize our current situation. You know, this was written thirty years ago.
Okay, so we'll be adopting this, uh, probably tonight, is, I think that's the goal. Uh, and then you'll be working in the future to fill in the names and train the individuals so that they know what their roles are and where they fall into this chart here.
Yeah, certainly. No, if I may, to, to clarify, the, it's, I don't recommend you put names in the plan because names change so much. You know, look, over the course of three years, people come, people go. But for your staff to have those names on a chart for them to use on a day-to-day basis is probably more critical. Uh, I don't like real names of these plans because they.
I understand. We don't want to put names. I understand. We don't want to put names in the plan, but before the emergency happens, the person who is our E O C director needs to know it's him or her.
We believe me, we have, we have names. Okay.
It's already assigned out and we've been doing training with those specific individuals on each of those.
That's what I'm trying to get to. We have the names. They're just not in memorialized in this plan. They're assigned roles.
Correct. Yeah. Every position with the exception of a few, as Mike mentioned, have been assigned to one or two individuals at this, uh, at the staff level, sometimes three again. And so they know who they are and they've been undergoing training over this last year.
And we've been doing training with them over the last year.
Okay. There was another mention in there and I just, again, I, it's a very large document. I want to commend the effort that you guys have, uh, have put forward on this. Uh, it's only good if we understand what it says in there and implement all of this stuff. The one that caught my eye was that, uh, for continuity of government, that we assign three standby officers who are sworn in. Uh, it calls back memories of that show Designated Survivor here. And I'm just wondering, um, you know, is there a path for Kindon to actually become a council member? Cause that would excite us all, I think.
Not him.
So continuity of government is a, is a plan that we're going to be working on next after this. It's same, it's, it's same as known as business continuity plan. So an example is that this place falls to the ground, where are we going to conduct business? Who's going to conduct business? Who's going to be in charge? So with that, that's the next, in fact, we're meeting with Dave tomorrow to start filling things out and start working toward getting that. Cause that's, that's a piece to this. Some of this is, you know, a lot of these plans are, are interconnected like hazard mitigation plan, which we're kicking off with, with council governments this week is tied in with the safety element. And it's also tied in, it also has active shooter. It has some of these other man-made disasters beside natural disasters. So a lot of them are connected. And getting back to your question, the long-winded answer is we are going to fill out names. Okay.
So this is great. I'm, I'm very excited. I appreciate all of your effort. Uh, this is a step along the way. It's a major step. Uh, it's a long time in the making. A lot of effort went into it and we really appreciate that. And it's also reassuring to know that we have more steps to come and that we'll be continually reviewing this and be prepared to the event of the next emergency. Thank you.
And I hope the council is going to be part of, you know, you're invited to the, uh, the exercise on the 28th and 29th of June, if you want to. And we'll figure out what we can do to have you participate in one way or another.
Thank you very much. And hopefully we'll have the portable emergency vehicle, temporary one that Dave, who we can work with and charge our phones and all that. Thank you very much. It's, as I said earlier, fantastic job. Great, great, great to have this all in one, uh, large document, but, but for all of us to have access to. And, and Dave, I've seen you for a number of years now on Zooms. I've been with regard to national and local, uh, fire safety issues in Northern California. I know you've done a lot of work, so we appreciate your help as well. Um, I am going to move on to, unless there's other council comments or questions, I'm going to move on to public comment. We have those who, some epic members and some, and all community members. The one with the biggest exclamation point, I'm calling on first, Norm Goodkin. Says enthusiastically support adoption. So, welcome.
There we go. Green light. All right. Uh, I'm Norm Goodkin. Uh, moved here in about 79. We had a horrendous rain and the radio said all amateur radio operators report to your units. And I didn't know who that would be. Uh, I found a local group that works with the sheriff's department, joined that group and been a member of the L A county disaster communication system since then. So, um, I'm bringing that to the table. I just wanted to comment to the folks that built this document. This has nothing to do with why I'm here representing, um, Epic, but I have like 50 years consulting and a large part of that was policies and procedures and document organization and planning. This is a really good document. I've rarely seen this. It's better than anything I've seen in L A county. Okay. Then out of the way, um, there's the statewide emergency management system. It's a standard. We intend to fully integrate with that and bring our expertise to it. Uh, prior to seeing this plan, um, our, our group Epic, uh, emergency planning, uh, emergency preparedness in Calabasas has been working essentially to integrate with the city to do this kind of thing. Our focus is communications with residents at the residential level. Now we, we understand that we've got a website. We've got information for residents that they can avail themselves of, but during an emergency, communications with residents needs to be addressed. And we're working on that specifically, the communications part of it with, um, to, to get information from the city, from trusted sources, from county, uh, county services, sheriff's department, uh, county fire, and bring that information to residents, make it available to them in two directions. So that residents can get information and residents can provide information. So like you were saying, how do you get back in? Maybe there's somebody at the checkpoints that knows about residents because typically at checkpoints, they bring in people from way out. Um, we're going to address that kind of thing with our radio communications. We've already set up infrastructure, in particular with the cog cities. We've got amateur radio operators in each of the cog cities. We meet on the air every week and do a drill to make sure we have that communications. And we reach out as far as Ventura County for, so it's not just the cog cities, but the adjacent cities as well. Um, love to share all that with you soon.
Thank you very much. And next is Joe Choco. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Joe Choco and I live in Calabasas. Every day we plan for how we're going to accomplish what needs to be done. We plan for all the things that, uh, we expect to happen. We plan for the known. How do we plan for the unknown? That is why the city has an emergency operations plan. Well, how do you plan for a fire emergency? Homes don't spontaneously ignite. They're lost when small fires grow around the home. Flying embers are the most common cause of home ignition. They can travel up to three miles in the air ahead of the main fire. Extreme wildfire conditions and loss of life and property are increasing. Residents play a key role in reducing the risks. Residents aren't required to make emergency plans, but protecting yourself, your family and your home are good reasons to have one. There's information available that can help. Epic, our Fire Safe Council can provide it. One of the ways that we do that is through our website. It's all for free and it's from reliable sources. Epic offers our residents free home ignition zone evaluations to help identify potential fire risks. We provide a written report to the resident that includes suggestions on how to minimize those fire risks. You can request one through our website. We're easy to find on the internet. You can Google Epic Calabasas to find a link to our website, epic-fsc.com. We're currently revamping the design and will launch our new and improved version soon. I would like to thank Mike Dyer, our city's public safety and emergency preparedness director, and acknowledge all of his efforts to bring about a very robust emergency operations plan, along with his help from Dave. Thanks also to Debbie Larson, our public safety coordinator and the public safety commissioners for their contribution in the development of the plan. The plan includes specific roles and responsibilities in executing any emergency response. Tabletop exercises to test the effectiveness of our city's response have already taken place. More will follow as practice drills reveal the adjustments needed to fine tune it. We all have a role in it. Our city, our residents, and our volunteer nonprofit Fire Safe Council. Epic members include trained preparedness evaluated, licensed amateur radio operators, other experts in emergency communications, SERC members from our city's emergency radio programs, and neighbors like you and me. Epic is putting the city's message of emergency preparedness into action. Our residents can actively do something to improve the chances for a good outcome when emergencies threaten. We encourage all to read the information on Epic's website and to act on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, Kim Eggerstrom, Eggerstrom, I'm sorry, uh, proud parent of a future Penn State Nittany Lion playing volleyball, number three team in the country. Welcome.
Um, thank you. Kim Eggerstrom, Calabasas. Um, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here at city hall in person to support this emergency operations plan. I'm a longtime, over 21 years now, resident and homeowner. I love our community and have volunteered at the school Chaprel, Stells, uh, C H S, and, um, Mr. Robert Yalda's School Area Traffic Safety Committee and walk to school events over the years. I learned about Epic Emergency Preparedness in Calabasas, uh, just in October, and have become an active member. I'm here to talk about the education and community outreach aspects of Epic, specifically regarding wildfire preparedness. Several of us have participated in training courses offered by the Resource Conservation District of the Santa Monica Mountains so that we can help achieve Epic's goal of providing home ignition zone evaluations to all 8,000 homes in Calabasas. About 100 have been done already at all corners of the city, which is awesome, but we have a ways to go. Home ignition zone evaluations are free, private, and usually take about 45 minutes. I had our home evaluated and have participated in several, both as an assistant and as an evaluator. Each one is a learning opportunity. Did you know, I know you all know that, um, wind-driven wildfire embers can travel up to three miles? That is scary. But did you also know that keeping rain gutters clear of dead plant matter can help mitigate risks from those embers? There's more to it than that, obviously, but my point is when homeowners participate in a H I S, they learn something they didn't know before. Maybe something that seems obvious, but hadn't been previously considered. They gain insight and a personalized, personalized, private written H I S report, which can be used as a checklist towards risk mitigation. I look forward to educating my neighbors and fellow residents who can then learn to reduce wildfire risks to their homes. Thank you, city council, staff, and especially Mr. Dyer, Mr. Jeffries, and Ms. Larson for all you do to support emergency preparedness in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, uh, the last public speaker card I have is another, uh, member of our Public Safety Commission. In addition to Joe Choco is Brian Cameron. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, my name, my name is Brian Cameron. I'm a longtime Calabasas resident. Um, two years ago, emergency preparedness in Calabasas was created to be an outreach and education resource for Calabasas residents. Two years in, have we have made progress on our, uh, on many of our objectives, some of which you've already heard. Uh, my reason for standing here, however, is to recognize the significant progress the city has made in its efforts to better prepare our residents for the next public emergency, be it wildfire, earthquake, utility service outages, landslides, or man-made crises. As the old saying goes, those who fail to prepare are preparing to fail. The emergency operations plan you are considering this evening is proof that our city takes seriously the need to prepare for these threats. While most of the city directors and managers, as well as several of the city's commissions, had a hand in the creation of the E O P, I want to acknowledge the leadership behind the creation of this document. The Public Safety Task Force of Mayor Shapiro and Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub, city manager Meek, and Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Department Director Mike Dyer and coordinator Debbie Larson. A job well done. Thank you. The city will, of course, roll this plan out to the public, which will hopefully recognize the plan as the blueprint for keeping our residents as safe as possible from disasters. Epic will integrate the contents of the E O P and our communication materials as often as we can. Epic is very pleased that we have been recognized as part of the plan. While we're still building out our structure, we are enthusiastic about augmenting the city's work by participating in disaster drills and exercises utilizing our echo communication platform, which Norm was referring to. Preparing residents for the next wildfire by teaching them how to harden their homes from flying embers, which Joe and Kim were talking about, and conducting community lectures and presentations on emergency preparedness. Epic is making significant progress in a number of other initiatives, including upgrading our website, expanding the number of trained home ignition zone evaluators we have in the field, rolling out the distribution of family radio services radios to neighborhoods to provide residents with accurate information during and immediately following an emergency event. Uh, as a ape man who became sentient in the novel 2001: A Space Oddity, Odyssey, mused, we don't know where we're going, what, we don't know what we're going to be doing with our skills, but we'll think of something. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I have no other public speaker cards here, but Madam Clerk, are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, John Suvara, but it may be John. We'll see.
Well, John spoke last time, so maybe he's sharing. Welcome.
Hello, this is John again.
Welcome.
Thank you. And, uh, I'm really impressed with, I see, uh, the plans that have been put together. It's, it's, they're very good. The, uh, mobile disaster, uh, emergency disaster unit, uh, I guess it's not, not going to be available for a little bit. So I'm beginning to wonder, uh, I saw that, uh, the third site that was being considered, uh, on one of these screens for the emergency disaster unit was, uh, was the senior center. So we're, you know, it seems to me like we're talking about emergency disaster centers, uh, that are located all on the east side of town. And on the west side of town is where we usually have the fires. You know, since I've been here and, uh, we moved here in 1975, we had a big fire that came through in 83 that ended up burning four houses in our, in our community. Uh, we've had other big fires that have come through. Most of them have gotten stopped. And then, uh, in the Wolsy Fire, we had nine houses that were lost here. And so what I was wondering is the community center is now underway in terms of, uh, getting the roof repaired and, and opening up. At one point that was being considered as an emergency communications, uh, emergency center. How about that becoming a, you know, start the plan for that now? Because we think that that's going to ha, that roof is going to be in place in two to three months. And this way, we have an emergency communication center over in, on this side of town. It happens to be right next to the sheriff's station, which is a nice convenience. And, uh, and it's a big solid building. And if that's not possible, maybe set up a temporary center at Deanza Park. Those are my thoughts about how you might try to figure out how to, how we might be able to support the, the, uh, east side of town, I mean, the west side of town, uh, with some close in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe, uh, I would like to say.
If I may, Mayor, um, Mr. Suvara brought up a point that we've been considering ever since we heard we, you know, the, we were going to do repairs. So as we go forward with our continuity of operations plan, we're going to consider the community center and Deanza Park as an alternative facility.
Madam Clerk. We have, uh, John Suvara, so I'm assuming it's John this time. So we'll.
Well, it has to be. He only gets three minutes. Come on, John. All right. Welcome, John. Unless the hand just didn't go down. Madam Clerk.
Please unmute yourself. I don't see the minimum.
Okay. All right. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item online?
None. None.
Okay, and since there are no other hands raised on the desk, I'm going to go ahead and, and very be honored to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-1852 approving the updated 2023 Calabasas Emergency Operations Plan.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A resounding five zero. Thank you very much, very much for all your hard work. We look forward to continuing the great work. All right, we will move on to item number seven, our very patient, very own Barbara Lockwood, a librarian to give the library report and council direction on library operations. Thank you for waiting. And we're thrilled you're here.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members, for having me tonight. Um, I'll give a little bit of the background from my staff report. Um, I think uh one of the reasons you are interested in this is because the latest development with the Hidden Hills MOU. Um, in 2013, the City of Hidden Hills, Calabasas, and the Los Angeles Unified School District entered into a memorandum of understanding for the City of Hidden Hills to provide funds to Calabasas Library for supplemental library services, as well as funds to be directed by the district for the purchase of online books and other digital materials. And under the terms of the MOU, Calabasas provided residents of Hidden Hills with library services in the same manner as residents of Calabasas. So this MOU was renewed by all parties in 2018. Um, at their meeting of February 13th this year, Hidden Hills City Council instructed their staff not to extend or renew the current MOU. Um, the MOU expires on June 30th, 2023. Hidden Hills is in the process of selecting a consultant to assist with the future delivery of library services because they do need to use this money for library services. Um, until then, Hidden Hills is without reciprocal library services. Um, and there was some concern that the withdrawal of these funds would impact the library in a negative manner. So I'm, the following PowerPoint provides information on the status of the library and the budget outlook. You know, go through the PowerPoint. Okay, just a little history of the library. Most of you know this already, but um Calabasas left the LA County Library System in 1998 and opened up a small storefront library under the management of Library Systems and Services. Um, as in fact, this July will be our 25th anniversary of the library, as a city library. As the library grew, we moved two times into rental spaces. In 2007, the city took over the management of the library. The library moved into the current space now, where it is now in the Civic Center in 2008. And during COVID, the library building was closed, but staff continued to work both in the building and remotely to answer questions and check out materials. We did this by appointment outside. And in April 2021, the building reopened to the public. Um, I put this picture up because uh this was from the Mural Road Library back in 1999. And the pictures, if you remember, Jemima Perry, who actually worked in the tiny little room when it was part of LA County up in City Hall, was a room in City Hall and then moved to the storefront. So she was there at the very beginning. Uh, currently, I'm just going to go through some stats real quick. Um, we have about 31,000 library card holders and uh 16,842 LVUSD digital cards. Now, these are cards that are given to students, staff, and faculty. And um, they, uh, these cards allow access to digital materials and databases, which was really valuable during COVID because students can use all the resources when the buildings were closed, school was closed, and they were able to keep up with their schoolwork by using our digital resources. This is just a quick overview of what our collection is right now. Uh, I don't have to go through this, all of it, but you can read a lot of that. Um, you know, more and more, we have, you can see our digital magazines, we have 7,000. We have um 35,000 streaming videos, which is through Hoopla, which is a really cool program. We'll talk about that in a minute, some other things. And as you recall, back in 1998, we had exactly zero in our collection. And over the years now, we have 154,268 items that can be checked out. Uh, this also goes to um our collection circulation. This is very interesting, too, because you can see that electronic use and database use is more now than physical items that are checked out. So people really got to, able to use, they were able to learn and use all our digital materials during COVID. These are just samples of our programs. You can see we have programs for our children, teens, adults, um. And there's some pictures, this, this one. Uh, on the left is a craft program that we still hold some things outside. We have both inside and outside. It's a Study Buddy Story Times. The one in the lower left corner is uh when Lee Goldberg came for an author's visit. Um, we have lots of programs, summer reading, where we have, you know, we have professional performers come. We have a big program coming in June 28th from the Music Center downtown, LA Music Center. They're bringing the Alley Cats to us. If it's a free program, it's for all ages. So that should be fun. And we always have all this information on our website and flyers throughout the library. You can see that we're doing a lot more programs this year, even uh, you know, we're close to a full year's attendance at, of, you know, from last year. Um, I was, as of April, we're almost up to all of last year's total number because obviously we're still kind of half closed because of COVID. Um, I like this. We have some super cool programs at the library that people probably don't know about. I'm not going to read them all. I mentioned Hoopla before, you know, Acorn TV. People pay a lot of money each month for Acorn, the British TV. It's free at the library with your library card. Um, we have all sorts of programs on um, uh, skills to help seniors, classes, um. You know, you could read all this stuff. Digital navigators, it's a low-cost internet service and devices for uh low-income residents. It's through the State of California Library. Um, the California State Library gives us, we apply for and get many grants from them. They provide us with a lot of free databases. Um, if you're not familiar with the Zip Books, I've just uh applied for the third funding, third year of funding. We send books directly to patrons' homes from Amazon. And it's all free. And when the uh, when they're finished with books, they bring back to the library. I catalog them and go back into the collection. The uh State Library Park passes, I hope everyone knows this, but with your library card, you can check out a park pass and get the free parking at 200 state parks throughout California. And we check those out for two weeks at a time. Uh, we have live, besides Study Buddies in-house, we have a 24-hour live tutoring, too, online. This is our great library staff, you can see. Um, and I just want to mention support is provided by Library Commission, Friends of the Library, and teen volunteers. You know, you mentioned earlier about how wonderful our teens are in this town. I really have to say they are. We could not run the library without the teens. They do so many things for us. Um, they run a lot of programs for the children. They do the coding classes for the kids. Uh, they help us with all the summer reading. The Teen Library Council is our advisory board. They tell us all the things that, you know, and they communicate back to the high school, too. All right, I think this is what you're interested in, is the library budget. This is, uh, you can see this is our last year library budget. These are actuals. And you can say, see, we had a change in our fund balance. We had a positive fund balance. I'm going to go back to the report for a minute and talk about fiscal impact. Um, uh, library revenues were $2,875,295, and the city, City of Hidden Hills last year contributed $495,709, which was about 17% of our budget, which was really kind of a small percentage of our budget. But I have to say, you know, it did really help us because it helped us with all the digital materials, which are very expensive. Um, however, that amount of money did not contribute to staff time. None of the money they gave us paid for any of the staff. And staff did a lot of work on these, on these digital, you know, you, we have to order, we have to catalog, we have to put in the mark records, et cetera. Um, but the fund balance, the library has had a, a very positive fund balance for many years. So um the next page I want to show you is their proposed library budget and recommended for 2324. Um, I, I take that back. This was our, our previous budget. Now, the revenues I have in there were from the actual budget document that was prepared originally last year. And the expenditures are a little different than what was in the published um a budget from last year because we spent a lot more money on digital collections this year. Just because the library was open, people are used, as you saw from the circulation statistics, all of a sudden people want eBooks, they want digital materials, so we've been spending a lot more money. So um, this is going to have an impact. The Hidden Hills, the loss of Hidden Hills revenues will have an impact on this area. Um, just to point out a couple of things. Um, in the past, we've always take, transferred $250,000 to our capital budget. Um, but you can see we really didn't spend money on capital outlay. And we don't anticipate next year spending a lot of money on capital outlay. And if we do need something for the library, I mean, we already have a lot in our capital fund. But we can also, for incidentals, we can use um uh, capital funds in the Civic Center O and M. So I'm not too worried about that. Um, so next year, I'm recommending that we don't do the transfer to capital fund. Um, just, I, I don't think at this point we can afford to do it right now. Um, let me see what else. Most of the loss of the funds will um affect primarily LVUSD. I'm going to go to the next screen. Um, oh, let me go back for a minute. Um, you'll see our digital collections were going to reduce to 100,000 rather than 250,000. So I, we're still planning on keeping a lot of the databases that their general public uses, but eliminating a lot of the curriculum-based LVUSD databases that they asked for specifically. Um, they also have us buy a lot of digital uh eBooks, reference books for children. We uh, we did use money this year to buy about 8,000 new eBooks, reference eBooks. So those will still be in the collection for next year. And they're perpetual. They'll always be used. We probably just, we want to do it this year so we get updated reference books. But uh, I'm not sure we can anticipate doing in the next couple of years. Um, physical collections will probably just maintain what we have now. Current library fees, you can see uh right now, we uh charge $18 an hour for non-residents. Um, but currently, besides Calabasas residents, Hidden Hills residents can use the study rooms for free and anybody with a uh LVUSD digital card. Interlibrary loans, we charge $2 for residents, $10 for non-residents, proctoring $35 per test, printing $0.10 for black and white, $0.20 for color, uh, $0.25 per page for copying. Lost book fees, um, we charge the cost of the book fi, plus $5 processing fee. The multipurpose room right now, it, it's free for uh nonprofit and community members. Um, but as you know, all the other rooms, the Founder's Hall and anything through community services, they do charge. And library cards are free to all California residents at this point. So here are some recommendations. Um, again, eliminate several databases, and those are the ones that are specific. And when I say specific, they're the ones that the school district asks us to buy. So there are things like middle school history and context, science and context, and they're specifically for middle grades or elementary or high school. Um, curriculum eBooks I just talked about, those are the ones that we just actually did buy a lot this year before the money ran out so that students can have them. And uh, uh, we're thinking about eliminating the LVUSD digital cards because it costs a lot of staff time, IT time to input that. Um, during COVID, we had people calling at 10 o'clock at night, I need to get a digital card. You know, we're taking cards at home, I mean, taking calls at home and, and adding this to the databases. Um, maybe charge a fee for a library card for non-residents in jurisdictions without free reciprocal library borrowing privileges. So I mentioned before that if you don't have a library, you don't have reciprocal borrowing, uh, library borrowing privileges. And I say that below. A reciprocal library is defined as a library of physical and digital collections and a full-time MLS librarian. Um, increase all non-resident fees for study rooms to $20 an hour, proctoring $40 a test, and add a $50 fee for use of the multipurpose room for all non-residents. This is just the future, and you can read that. Staff was able to pivot and evolve during COVID. We will continue to adapt to changing demands and new delivery systems. And our strong sense of purpose helps us to stay true to our goals, delivering excellent customer service and relevant resources to the community, being mindful of equity, diversity, and inclusion. And do you have any questions?
Thank you for that wonderful thorough report. Uh, I'm actually going to go ahead with my colleague's uh acceptance and start on this one because this one is uh something that has bothered me for quite a while. And uh, I'm one of the people who asked for this report, one of the council members who asked for this report. Um, I had the pleasure to serve on the Library Commission and chair uh for six years here. And fantastic to work with you. I got to do everything from helping uh build the, or look at all and learn about all the opportunities our city would have as it grew, as the library grew, and go through and look at furniture with former mayor Bob Hill. Now, who would think we'd know anything about furniture or anything, but we learned. And it was, it's a labor of love because to me, it's a jewel in the city. It is tremendous and fantastic what you and staff do on a regular basis to keep our residents uh available, available with the utmost, not just programs, but books, data, everything, eBooks. Um, here's what I want to say. I'm going to start out by saying 2023 to me seems to be a year where our good friends, neighbors, and partners appear to cut ties with our city. Uh, they, and they, they forget that we are good friends and neighbors. And what I mean by that in this instance is Hidden Hills did not give us, our council, the opportunity to come speak with us, meet with us, and see if there were any alternative solutions, mutual solutions, to complete whatever it is their goals were. Rather, they acted as they saw fit. And I think that is not something that a good neighbor does, and we are. We're great neighbors uh with Hidden Hills. We always have been. And they have been with us. And this was a great original MOU joint use agreement we had. And we also worked with the school district. That's why you brought up all those opportunities for students in the city that were helped by this, in part because of all your hard work and efforts, in part because of Hidden Hills, of course, and the school district helping. So it was a great partnership. Again, if you're going to change something, at least have a discussion. And I, I'm saying it because I've received a lot of calls, a lot of contact from residents. And I, I'm saying it because I received a lot of calls, a lot of contact from residents, friends, not so much friends of Hidden Hills who were shocked by this. They had no idea this was coming forward. This is done by their council, it's their prerogative. But the manner in which it's done to me is something that is not acceptable and not something we would ever do as our city, I would hope to another city that we work with. So, um, that is something that, that is very upsetting to me, should be upsetting to this council. Um, everybody's entitled to have their different opinions on that. I, I, um, I know you have done everything possible to paint a really nice picture here. I have some questions and comments I'll get to, but one of the things I have a, a comment on is in addition to, I know there's fine opportunities or not fine charging and additional costs and so forth. I'd like to see us have as a council, I'm gonna recommend this, three to five items a year, special programs or events for Calabasas residents only. And that of course would include those that are illegally entitled to, um, be at those programs as you indicated by your report. And that would be a, a special children's craft program, a team program, an adult event, speakers and a senior event. I'd like to see us reward those who are continuing in our residence, who helped for all these years support our libraries and we owe a duty to them to provide those services to them. I still believe there's an opportunity of, and again, if Hidden Hills wants to, wants to sit down and work something together, I know we can do that. I believe that. Um, but in the meantime, I think we reward our residents and do it in a positive way. So that's one thing I'll, I'll mention. Um, and then what does this mean or project in your opinion, future years? I mean, right now, we're basically not gonna go ahead, if I heard right, with digital books, students, uh, fifty thousand eBooks, L V U S D digital cards and not transfer to the, uh, capital funds, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand for this particular budget. What do you see, what do you see the budget going for future years? That's a concern.
It is a concern. I agree with you. Um, I think maybe we just, I, I'm hoping we get more property tax, that's one thing. And I saw, um, you know, it looks like, uh, the property tax estimates are always under than what we actually get, which is nice. And because we've had a positive fund balance so, for so long, we do have, um, a healthy, uh, reserve in the library. Um, I think that, I don't think we overspend at all. So I, I can't really think of too many ways to cut out. Um, I'm not quite sure what the answer is.
And if I had another question following up on that, if, and this came from the public, so I, I'm not gonna take credit for it if it's brilliant. And if it's not, it's not my question. Uh, if we did not go ahead and cut the eBooks, the digital cards or, or not, or continued to fund the capital and in case we needed deferred maintenance or something large, which is the point of that, I believe, um, uh, of those funds, if we didn't, what would our savings be if we alternatively, and I'm sure you looked at this, had to close the library for a day? And I'm not recommending that, but what savings would that be, if you have any idea?
I don't know if it's would save that much, except maybe in electricity. Well, not necessarily because the founders hall, seniors still use the founders hall every day. So we still have the overhead. Um, it might save some money with hourly employees. We don't really have that many. We have a large turnover. And in fact, one of the things I said in this budget was that the, uh, the salaries that are estimated in the budget are usually a lot more than what we actually spend. Um, I know at one point after the two thousand eight recession, in two thousand twelve, we did close the library for a week between Christmas and New Year's. We also did some things like close on Mother's Day and Father's Day. Um, so that did actually save staff, but of course, full-time staff still works. Um, and also a lot of the work is done, not when we're open. The cataloging, the ordering, the, the maintenance of the platforms.
Right. Okay. I, I appreciate that. And I think our city manager wanted to jump in, if I'm correct.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Those are wonderful questions. Um, as Barbara mentioned, um, we're fortunate to have, uh, library fund reserve, uh, approximately about two million dollars. And so this gives us a cushion this year to look at, um, changes if necessary, where we need to make changes, uh, whether it's to operation or, um, uh, materials that we provide and, and services that we provide to the community. And, and so again, that, that forty-five thousand dollar deficit that you see, we have that cushion through our library fund reserves. Um, the other thing I'd like to point out is, and Barbara mentioned this, is the library a- almost fully is funded by the library property tax assessments. Now, with a few exceptions, the, the general fund does pay for, uh, the liability insurance. It pays for the workers' comp. There's a few other things associated with the J P I A. But it is very common that general fund monies are used throughout the state to support libraries. And so again, that would be a policy decision of the coun- the council in future years that transfers of general fund monies could go to the library to continue operations.
And I'll ask a follow-up question and maybe look to our city attorney on that. Because of the bond and the grant which we received rather to help the library, are we even allowed to do that? Because I was under the impression we had to have a separate budget, separate, uh, from the general fund at all times.
The library has to be maintained in a separate fund budget. There is a process to transfer a certain portion back from the general fund back into the library fund. Similar to the transfer of capital projects back out, but it has to be separately budgeted and separately funded.
All right. And, and I'm not desirous of doing that. Again, I, I'm, as you can tell, and, and I think I'm making it clear, I'm very upset in the manner in which this is done, that's a decision. But we need to now take a look at what's best for our residents and the future of the library. So, um, and again, the fa- the fact that we have a, a large reserve is important, as I remember, always because technology's changing. Everything's changing with regard to collections, there's opportunities. And plus, the reserves also are necessary in case of any major, uh, maintenance or changeover as well. That's what we used to do on the budget committee for the library.
And I believe our capital fund, tell me if I'm wrong, has almost two million dollars or more in it.
Right. All right. And then I'll jump to this and I'll turn to my colleagues rather than continue an event. Uh, the current library fees, that page, um, I am more than happy, I think I went through this whole page and said, I'm happy to increase some of those things. I don't wanna, uh, penalize our, our residents, um, but some of these fees are a little light. Uh, study rooms definitely for non-residents, I have no problem raising, um, and some other things. So I won't go to that now. On your recommendations, uh, my first question is how does that cost savings affect our students and were there any discussions with L V U S D, by the way?
Uh, no, there really weren't.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then how much per year do you recommend charging for a library card to non-juror- residents in jurisdictions without free reciprocal library borrowing privileges?
Well, I've done some research and you can charge any, some, uh, Lassen County charges twenty-eight dollars per person and Cerritos charges a hundred and fifty dollars per person. Um, Thousand Oaks two years ago, I think they charged eighty.
Okay. And I just actually spoke to the mayor, Cerritos, on this issue and I, I, uh, I understand what they did. And, and the last item too, I would agree with an increase of non-resident fees for study rooms. I think that's, we have very limited, there's three rooms, I believe, in the back.
Yes.
And I have no problem, uh, raising those because again, I'd like to see our residents get benefits. It's not about the stick, I'd rather see a carrot at this point. All right. I will stop my comments and turn to my colleagues. Uh, Mayor Patel, mindful.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Can, I just wanted, for a point of clarification, and then I'll respond to the recommendations. The Hidden Hills money, can you just explain the partnership Hidden Hills L V U S D and how that, and how that money, explain where L V U S D comes into this?
So half of the money was supposed to go to L V, well, did go to L V U S D for the purchase of digital materials. And, um, that was directed by their librarian there. She would tell us what she wanted us to buy.
But sorry, so sorry to interrupt, Barbara, just, but it, this was from the Hidden Hills money?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The Hidden Hills money allocated a percentage to L V U S D and then in return to per- we purchased the material.
They gave the money to us, L V U S D would tell us what they wanted us to buy for them. And then we provided it to them. So, um, because it's a lot of work and, um, we had the vendors, we were already buying a lot of databases. So we purchased it, we spent this money from Hidden Hills and then students had access to it from the digital cards.
Hmm. Okay. Okay. So, okay, I understand that.
And also, uh, I should mention too, we, uh, bought a lot of books for their three sixty program.
Okay. And that was all from the Hidden Hills money?
Yes.
Okay. So I assume that, and I guess this is for you guys to talk, confirm with L V U S D, that L V U S D is aware that now we don't have that money, so therefore we can't purchase these things.
Yes.
Okay. That's already been established. Okay. Okay. So moving forward, I think that our library needs to be a library for our residents and if other people want to utilize it, they need to pay for it. Um, especially since, I mean, Hidden Hills is taking their money away from us. So if their residents are still interested in coming, they should have to pay a fee for that. And the programs that you talked about with L V U S D, if we don't have the money anymore, we can't do it. I mean, that's just the reality. So I'm fine with all of your recommendations. Um, I think we need to, non-residents, we should absolutely increase the fees. Um, yeah, that's really where I stand. If the money's been taken away, then the privileges that come with that money also are taken away. And I don't think anyone in Hidden Hills will ha- I mean, I don't think there's any issues to that. Like they, they made the decision to remove the money, L V U S D is aware of what that means. So I support the recommendations, anything we have to do to support our residents and at this library. And if anyone else wants to come, they can pay a fee.
Councilmember Exogin?
I have two, uh, co- kind of question comments. There's a disparity in the, um, I guess Matt might know the answer this better. There's just a little disparity in the, uh, revenue shares versus a population. Like Hidden Hills has, say, two thousand people that are twenty-five thousand, but they're, they're seventeen percent of the budget. I'm assuming that's because the revenues, the, it's assessed property value upon which the library is based and their properties on a, on a case-by-case basis are, are valued higher.
That's my understanding, yes.
So it's never by population, it's by property value?
Yeah, that, that library function is a straight property value and loop it through the Prop thirteen process.
Okay. So does that mean like wealthier communities in Los Angeles County just get better, get more revenue for their libraries, right?
Generally, yes.
That doesn't quite seem fair, but I will pass over that. Um, the other question I have, Barbara, is for you. On one of these slides, and it was in the report before the slides, there was a breakdown of participation in library events. So I did a couple of calculations and in, uh, some of the categories, yeah, it, it didn't seem like there was like, okay, like, like, let's, let's look at the teens. There's thirty-nine teen events, right? And so there's a hundred and forty-nine participants. And so I, it's not a very high participation rate.
I can explain that.
Is that, is that by design?
No, you can see the next year though, that year was COVID. So what happened in, um, is for summer reading, we have fifty teens usually participate. There are volunteers and they help do sorts, all sorts of things, but we didn't have a lot of it during COVID. We had, um, we didn't have a lot of programs. Okay. So now already you can see just from July to April thirtieth of this year, we already have five hundred and twenty-two. So it's gone up three times as much.
Uh, yeah, but I, I, I saw that too, but I'm still looking at it like I'm trying to get an idea of what the, those classes or activities are. Because the sixty-four into five twenty-two is not a huge, I mean, I don't know what this is. Is this like designed for fifty people and only ten show, ten show up? Or is it, is it a smaller core group?
It's a smaller core group. For instance, we have writers' club and there's only about five teens who help the twenty-five kids. So it's kind of a club for them to do and help. Um, study buddies, we have, eh, there's only a few. Um, it, it used to be that we had many more teens when we had everything live. Now we're still doing study buddies online, so we only have a few teens doing each one. Um, teen library council, I think there's only something like ten, uh, teens on that. So we don't have mega programs for teens and I have to tell you the truth. We have like movie nights and, and things like that and we get a small, we don't get a huge attendance of kids on that.
Okay.
But we do have a big event for the teens, is the fun fair. Um, uh, so we have a lot of teens participate in that.
So when you have, if you have a class where, or an event where your attendance is way under what you anticipated could or should be, what, what steps are taken to, to assess that or change it or, or anything of that sort?
Um, you know, it's, I probably, I probably should have done stats from two thousand and eighteen because these are, because of COVID, we don't have a, you know, a lot. But we, you know, the teen library council and our library commission is always saying this too. We do need to probably to have more communication with the high school to get teens to do.
Maybe they could take a look at some of the ones that aren't very well attended because this is of course an average. I'm just simply doing an average. I'm sure some have maybe twenty and some might have five. And it's not gonna be ten across the board. So just, just my thoughts, uh, on that. That's, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Crowe. Uh, thank you for the presentation and, uh, I too have a couple of questions if I might. On the library budget slide, uh, you list number of revenues there, including property tax, fines and recovery, the Hidden Hills funds that are, are being taken, uh, out of the equation, the state library grants, interest income and the general fund transfer. There's no line item there for the fees that we're talking about for the room rentals and things like that. Do they amount to much?
I think that's the part of fines and recovery.
Okay. Um, when it comes to the room rentals and, and those fees that we're talking about raising, what portion of the fines and recovery do we think this is? Is this, is it gonna amount to more than ten thousand dollars a year?
I, I don't think so, but, um, right now, most of the people that use those are from our students that aren't paying.
Sure.
So I, I don't know if it'll have that much of an impact, if they'll actually pay or they won't.
Well, given that, I would say that first of all, I would absolutely support increasing the fees for non-residents. Uh, understanding that those with an active library program that have a reciprocal agreement with us, certainly we would, you know, welcome that. But for those that don't, that are not residents of Calabasas, uh, absolutely, I would be in favor of raising those. I do want to recognize that that is what is going to protect these, you know, expenditures to, to be funnelled to Calabasas residents, but it's not gonna solve our budget. Um, we're losing fifteen percent of our revenues here with the withdrawal of Hidden Hills. And the largest line item in our budget unfortunately is staff. Um, and I'm really surprised to see not even a small cut in staff. I, it would be appropriate to see a fifteen percent reduction in staff. Uh, I know that's difficult to reduce man-hours because we're still providing services. But theoretically, with the loss of Hidden Hills participation, we're gonna have fewer people there. There's gotta be some area that we could, you know, reduce staff, which would be the most significant way to, uh, to address budget issues.
Again, these are, um, estimated staff and we never spend as much as what's actually in the budget.
Okay. I would encourage you then, uh, on that particular line item to, to work with Ron and Kendon. We've had similar discussions on our overall budget that if we're budgeting That if we're budgeting for a full staff for the full year and we know that somebody will eventually resign or, you know, be promoted to a different department or something. We can even budget for those less than 100% staff, 100% of the year. So that's something to consider to get ourselves back in balance here. I did have a question on the transfer to capital funds. There is a legal requirement, if Matt, you could help me out, that a library built with public funds must allocate something towards capital funds. And I know this because when we didn't have similar capital funds for our city hall, it was pleaded out that the library side already had that. Are you familiar with that?
Not that particular part off the top of my head, but we will confirm. We'll take a deep look at that.
We need to confirm that we were legally allowed to reduce the expense, the the transfer to capital fund. Because the idea is with the with libraries that you don't want to build them and then in 40 years when they're falling apart, not have the funds to upkeep them. So there was a requirement of some sort on that. And forgive me, I don't know exactly what it was. We might be able to defer that for a year. But we certainly can't do that indefinitely. So again, that's a a potential short term solution. I don't know if it's, you know, allowed or to what extent it's allowed, but it's certainly not a long term solution. I think the best long term solution was what was mentioned by Mayor Shapiro when we started here. I would love to see Las Vergenes Unified School District reaching out to Hidden Hills to facilitate this discussion between us and them. If there's any chance of resurrecting this and this this participation as a group. Whether it happens now or it happens a year from now. I would welcome that conversation because unfortunately, as we start siloing our money as as the city of Calabasas serves only the city and Hidden Hills creates their silo and Los Vergenes Unified School District creates their silo and the county of Los Angeles creates their silo and and we don't play well with our neighbors and share our resources and and create these joint use agreements. Nobody wins. And this is unfortunately a sad example of just that. So perhaps we can get that conversation going in the future. And until then, we certainly have to make some hard decisions. Barbara, I thank you for all your work on this and I and I support your your proposal there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a point of information, and I appreciate your comments. A member of the, my understanding, the city manager and the member of Hidden Hills did meet with the school district already. They we just are not invited to the table. Councilmember Auburn.
I didn't know that piece of information. I would have agreed with Councilman Kraut very, very much. It's it's disappointment that they had to pull the plug. To me, well, first of all, thank you for all the service and all these years at the library. I know it's something you do out of love. And to so many of us, the library is a safe zone. And if anything, if there ever going to be a war, it would be not shouldn't be over a library. It's a sister city and they should behave like one. We've always had a good relationship with them and you know, you can patch things up, but that's for another discussion. I know the city manager has made every effort to send letters. And I've read them and they're direct and to the point and open. It certainly appears that the hole in the budgets to fill the pieces, it's going to be difficult. You know, you can raise fees just so much. I'm not sure how much those fees, the you know, the the study room and the library cards and if you put all that together, because once the library cards are sold to the non-residents, there's not going to be that many library cards that will be bought. So it's really going to be a rush in for about six months or a year and then quite a drop off. So there's going to have to be some adjustments we'll have to make. Good points were brought up about the requirement on the deferred account.
Yeah, we'll sort that out.
Know more about that. You've got our support and I appreciate the report very, very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments? Yeah, Proton Mindfau.
I just wanted to add, I'd be supportive of doing programming also just for residents. If the team programming is not so successful, maybe we, you know, look for other programming that is to get the biggest draw. So we can be creative and look at different things. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments by council? Seeing Mr. City Manager, yes.
So Mayor, just as procedurally, so this is a report. And so what we'll do is Barbara and I will continue to explore those fees and come back at a future date with these recommendations and perhaps some others to be implemented by the council.
That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. And thank you for staying so late.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all of your work. And thank everyone. Oh, I forgot, Madam Clerk, I'm aware there's no one online, but I want to verify, is there anyone online wishing to ask comments or questions on this item?
No one willing to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Information, direction has been provided. We'll move on to informational reports to check register for the period April 29th to May 12th, 2023. Seeing no questions or comments and none from the public. Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Now we'll turn to task force reports. We'll start with Councilmember Auburn.
Thank you. Been a quiet two weeks, excuse me, two weeks for me being gone. I do have the Clean Power Alliance coming up next week. Looking forward to that and the success that it's had for our city and the state. Also met with the economic development with Mayor Proton. And we're moving along. We're looking forward to hearing some results on the cannabis polls. So we'll have some more to report. Hopefully we'll have some answers on that. Hopefully within a month.
Thank you very much. All right, Councilmember Kraut.
Thank you. I attended a number of events. First of all, on the 11th, I attended the Wildlife Crossing tour with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and our supervisor, Lindsay Horvath. That was a really educational and exciting view of the new Wildlife Crossing Bridge viewed from the hills immediately to the south of it. Totally different perspective of what's coming in. I also attended the North Santa Monica Watershed presentation at Las Vergenes Municipal Water District that evening on the 11th. Very informative, very exciting, the things that we're doing. Of course, the wine tasting event was already mentioned that, of course, we were doing it just because the support we want to provide to the Chamber of Commerce had nothing to do with the food and wines. It was truly a service that we provide to our chamber here. In addition, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy met on the 15th virtually. I was at that meeting as well. And our budget subcommittee met on the 16th of June. Finally, the Gory Hills Calabasas Community Center. Councilmember Buzagin and I were able to take a tour of that on Monday to just review the condition of the facility and the the assets that are in there, the the gym equipment, the office supplies, the the meeting room supplies and such, and want to say thank you to our community Services Director Erica Green and all the work that her and her team have been doing there. Looking forward to seeing that place open the end of this year.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Buzagin.
In addition to the walkthrough that Peter mentioned, I've also been over there to look through some of the supplies and going through what needs to be kept and what needs to be discarded. With respect to Contract Cities and the league, the main I've done a number of things, but the main thing has already been mentioned. I attended the Ananheal Municipal Seminar last week with both Ed and Kendon. And as always, I enjoyed it very much and found it very informative.
Great, thank you. Mayor Proton Mindfau.
We had our CAG meeting. Chief Luna was supposed to attend, but due to scheduling issues, he'll join us at the next meeting or at a future date. We had, as Ed said, our Economic Development Subcommittee and we're now meeting monthly. So we'll have more updated after our next meeting.
Great, thank you. And I attended this one yesterday. The SCAG Legislative Committee where we discussed a number of bills took positions very similar to what we are doing as council tonight to support local control items and oppose those not relevant to that. Tomorrow's Valley Economic Alliance Board Meeting where the Steve Allen Excellence Awards take place at Pierce at 4:30. Those are for all youth across the entire valley. Alicia and I attended the PFC at AC Stella and CHS to honor outgoing boards and presidents. The I attended Chaperal Assembly and the acapella group there, which was very cute. We had, as already mentioned, I won't go into that what was already mentioned. And Mayor's Youth Council, I do want to give an acknowledgement here because that's where I had it for last night. They were amazing. As mentioned, Mari was fantastic, the speakers. Alicia, who helped push this forward for a long time now, a very important event, very important to all those who can watch it on CTV. And wherever it streams, tremendous. And they have great events coming forward. Last but not least, a shout out to the chamber who had their monthly Attorney Forum Chamber event today and went quite well. Believe three new members were there and a very thorough agenda. So lots more coming from there. That is it. Does the city manager have anything to report tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. At the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned the July 4th celebration. We want to express our appreciation to the school district for the use of the CHS stadium for that event. It's a wonderful event. And so we're excited to be able to move forward and promote and hold that event again this year. Following up on just one item, the consultant that the city has hired to work with our landscape lighting assessment districts and the LMD districts, our landscape maintenance districts has already started meeting with residents with HOA groups, neighborhood associations. And so that's that analysis is in progress and more to come on that. And then finally, next week, we'll begin the assessment for our recreational programming study. We thank you for each of you for making yourselves available to the consultant to be able to participate that. And following meetings with you, we'll start having community input as well on those recreational programs for the city.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any council requests for future agenda or information items? I'm looking this way, seeing none.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go. First, yes, was Councilmember Buzagin?
Soon I would like to have a an agenda item regarding a review of our records retention policy. I won't get into too many details, but our records retention policy is in dire need of updating and clarification.
Okay, I think that's that's a good item. I think we tried that years years ago and tried something.
It's not being followed. So either in the budget, I don't know if it's in the budget discussion or where it is, Kendon, but I would like it to to be, because I submitted a budget item on that too. So I don't know if you have, I don't know if it's going to be in there or not.
The records retention?
Yeah. If it's not a line item in that, then then we need to. I submitted a request.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're seconding that.
I'm seconding that that as a future agenda item or future discussion item. Yes, I think it's important down down the road, certainly. Mayor Proton Mindfau.
Just an update, we talked about it before, an update on our new like shuttle or car service. It's not a car service, but you know what I mean? Just like how the ridership is, we talked about it, the future of looking for like a clean. I'm so tired of clean air vehicle. You know what I'm talking about? So just, yeah, we can bring that back. But the other thing is I still want the utility providers to come back. I think it actually shows a lot of nerve for Edison to show up tonight, even though it was for an award when we've been asking for the information. They need to get back to us. There was another outage. When was it, Michael Russo? I'm looking at you. We posted about it. This week, like last weekend, maybe? I think it was last weekend. It was a lengthy outage. And do we still know like why it was caused?
Was that a planned outage or was that a?
I don't believe it was planned.
1100 homes were affected.
100 homes were affected. 1100 homes were affected. And it went on for a great deal of time, but these are the things we're talking about. Like where's the communication when that's happening? How are we responding to residents? Everyone's home on the weekend. So I really, really want Edison, Spectrum and the cell phone providers to come back. I'm going to ask it every month till they come.
Can I ask for a friendly amendment to that request? And that's that we get follow up reports or our staff have communication with them rather than having them come here again to council. I'd rather see something actually provided to us rather than them coming here so we can tell them you're not doing what you're supposed to and they aren't going to provide us anymore.
We've asked them for the reports and they haven't been provided.
Are these the questions that you're talking about?
They've not.
Yeah, I haven't gotten any answers either.
About the infrastructure improvements, Saratoga Hills, they have not provided us anything that we asked for that night. I don't need them to come publicly. I just want the information so that we can understand it and that staff can meet with them.
I don't hear a second to your motion. I will. I do hear what Mayor Shapiro has suggested here and I I think we're wasting our time bringing the utility companies here. We don't have any authority or power over them and this venue is too small to sway their opinions. So I would strongly be in favor of continued follow up and leverage whatever we can through our staff and our city manager. But to bring them here for more conversations is, in my opinion, a waste of our time and futile.
Well, then I don't care if they come here, send an email, but I just want the information that we asked for.
I I would support following up that information rigorously, again, through our staff and city manager. But to bring them here, I would not support that.
But I think somehow the public wants to hear the answers. So if we get the reports from them, then staff can relay that information, but we have residents asking these questions. I saw when it was posted on social media. Do we know why there was an outage? Like we, our residents deserve the answers. So I don't, they don't have to come publicly, but I want to get that information out to the public.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, any other items? Okay. We will now move to adjourn unless Mr. City Manager, okay. We'll move to adjourn. City Council adjourned to a special, actually closed session meeting on Friday, May 26, 2023 at 10:30 a.m. And the next regularly scheduled meeting, because you won't be watching the closed session most likely, will be May 31st, a week from tonight, 7 p.m. with the main item being the budget. Very important. So we'll look forward to seeing you there. Have a wonderful holiday weekend.